I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday, February 21st at 6:04 PM. But I have a roll call, please.
Teresa A. Morris, present.
That's Sexton Duranian, present.
And Veronica Calle, present. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America under God, in His name, with all reverence and reverence. Thank you. I'd also like you to join us now for a moment of silence for Joe Masola, our former Veterans Services Agent who passed away this weekend. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded via Zoom. It will be posted on YouTube, and it is also live on Channel 9. For Chairman's additions or deletions, I have one. 3.1 is moved to March 7th. And that is the only addition or deletion that I have to either Teresa or Chad. Do either of you have anything to add or delete or air?
No, ma'am. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Chad, nothing? All right, we are now open for public comments. Are there any comments? If you're online, you could raise your hand, and if you are going to speak, I would need to see your camera.
We're going to see if you can...
Saying none. We have three sets of minutes to approve October 4th, October 18th, and February 7th. I'd like to take these one at a time. So let's start with October 4th. Is there a motion?
Just a minute. We had it right up here. Now it's gone. Sorry. Don't know where it disappeared to. Somewhere behind this Zoom screen. Chad, do you mind reading it? And I'll get the next one. I'm sorry, I just can't find it.
No, that's all right. I don't mind. I move that we approve the meeting minutes for October 4th, 2022.
And is there a second?
Second?
Any further comments?
I have two. On 2.2, when we were talking about the website revision, the line that says Java can be integrate, it should be integrated easily. And then two lines down from that, it says, "Present, remote, and shared," it's "present remotely." Revised was "present remotely." I'm just adding a "why," but outside of that, I think I'm okay with the rest of them.
All right, any for you, Teresa? Any changes? All right, hearing none, then can we approve with those two changes? All those in favor of approving the minutes for October 4th with the two changes that Chad requested? Since we have a remote member, let's do a roll call vote. So Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
That's Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calle, yes. All right, on to October 18th.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for October 18th, 2022.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments on these? Any? I have two. What happened with this is... I don't have any changes to the minutes. So do you, Teresa? Any changes?
Yeah.
Yep.
No.
All right, roll call vote. Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calle, yes. And the last one is for February 7th.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for February 7th, 2023.
Can I second that?
All right, any changes on that one?
You're doing okay with me?
I don't have any changes on that one. Teresa, do you have any changes on?
Yeah, maybe I didn't see it. Maybe I wasn't looking on the right place, but I thought we had a conversation about having Eric speak about a light at Sterilite, but I didn't see it in the minutes. Didn't we? I don't know if we just said we advised him to do it, made a motion, but I didn't see anything in the minutes about it.
No, the things are done with the minutes. They're done by watching the tapes. I remember talking about that, though, more than once with different people. I just don't remember if it was the last meeting. Did you go back and look at the tape, Teresa?
Yeah, it was the last meeting, because...
Do you know where, what part?
When we were talking about the streets having the...
The RFP.
...in Dan Dunn.
The what Dunn?
The RFP.
The RFPs under your, this would have been under your report. Just to give me an idea of where to look, if I'm going to look in the tape, or if you could look in the tape, Teresa, and show me where that is, that would be great. Sabrina's on patient this week, so I'm doing minutes for today, and I'll make any changes that need to be made.
Of course, Sabrina will be able to make it before the next meeting.
When she comes back before the next meeting. So just... So do we want to approve with that being added, if it's available?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, Madam Chair.
Okay, so discussions of Sterilite. I didn't note that at all. So it might have been under the RFP for the building? Or for 2.1?
2.1.
2.1, okay. All right, so approve the minutes for February 7th with an added sentence or two for the discussion of the Sterilite, of possible lightless Sterilite. Roll call vote. Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calle, yes. All right, it is now 6:15. Our first appointment is now at 6:45. So what I'd like to do is, I think moving down to the appointments, and then on to meeting business, as far as we can get in the time that we have. All right, so moving down to 3.1, we need a motion to amend the appointment for Natalie Cole as Veterans Service Agent to include a term of three years through June 30th, 2026. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we amend the appointment of Natalie Cole to include a term of three years through June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Teresa?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calle, yes. Moving on to 3.2, a motion to appoint Brian Fanioli as a full-time water service technician with the Water Department. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we appoint Brian Fanioli as a full-time water service technician.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say that I'm very pleased with, I think Cali might have done the PDF fillable form for the application for the town. I just want to say, good job. That kind of brings us into 2023.
Exactly. Would you like to, who did that?
Who did that?
I did that when I was applying for the job in Town and Midwestern.
Did you?
I took your form and made it into PDF fillable form while I was applying, because I didn't want my application to look like it was handwritten. And so then I, when I saved it and I sent it to Cali, so she put it on the web.
So she did have some handwritten it.
Yeah, Cali's the one who got it out there. I just had it in the back.
But I just wanted to point out that I saw that, and I was like, good for us.
Yeah, that's good.
Welcome to the 19th.
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion on the appointment that's on the table?
I'm sure that they vetted this with the Water Department, and they're happy, so we're happy.
The Board of Water Commissioners started on a thing.
This one they don't have. We talked about it, so we voted it.
All right, so Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calle, yes. Welcome, Brian. Moving on to the UPWP grant submission. I am going to, hopefully I have the ability to finish it on. So I did update, this is the United Project Work Program, is that what it stands for? Through MRPC, it's one of their grants.
Unified Planning Work Program.
Unified Planning Work Program, the UPWP grant, and this is part of the funding that the state gives to the regional planning agencies in order to allow towns to get planning services that they may not otherwise be able to afford. So going to meeting business. UPWP grant. Oh, it says five days ago. Why does it say five days ago? It looks like the wrong thing. Five hours ago, all right. So I'm gonna screen share this. This is, and I think there may be planning board members on today. This is to look at... We do have one.
Steve.
Host disabled participation. All right, what we would like to do is examine the corridor. Let me go back one minute. I'm going to go in one more time, and I'm going to put up the map.
Yes.
All right, so what we are asking for in this grant request is for an examination of the corridor along 119 from Route 113 all the way down through the, here's the Proctor Road-Townsun Road intersection, and coming up through the high school, this is the high school area in here, all the way up to the lights at...
That street.
And we're asking for a corridor study, for a traffic management study, because as time goes on, and, I mean, right now, we have problems with getting out at this intersection way in Townsend, and people who live in Broughton who are coming up to this intersection would have the same thing, and Pepperell along here, especially as buses are stopping to pick people up, to pick students up. And as more businesses come into this area, we have more curb cuts. So we're requesting a corridor analysis to see what can be done here, with the idea that whatever gets recommended, if it seems reasonable, could go on the tip, or could become part of the bilateral infrastructure bill.
Correct.
When there, we, the planning region did get a planning grant for that, and so in that planning process, and then perhaps if it was viable, we could apply for implementation grants. So the thing about this section is that Broughton is right down here, and this part of the road is mainly in Pepperell. So the Transportation Task Group looked at it, and we have contacted Broughton, Pepperell, and Town Highway Department, and Transportation Task Force Planning is part of that. So the idea is to study this, because in order to do anything, you need to have a study, and the last one was done in 2009. Teresa, I see that your hand is up, so go ahead and ask your question.
Yeah, just to help me, just one question. Is Playmore Preschool in the corridor or in the curb cuts?
The preschool that's next to the high school?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
It's here. The corridor analysis goes from here to here.
Oh, so it does include the curb cuts area?
Yeah, maybe we want to change our math a little bit and just say one big thing, corridor analysis, as opposed to, none of this is definite. This is all draft. It's due next week, Tuesday.
Yeah.
In the SharePoint, you'll see that we did receive letters of support from Pepperell. They are actually in a different planning agency than Townsend and Broughton. Townsend and Broughton are MRPC, Pepperell is...
NIMCOG.
NIMCOG, which stands for North Middlesex.
Council of Government.
Council of Government. So they have, their planning agency is a different regional planning agency than us. So having their support is critical, especially since the road is in Pepperell, but it means that, and MRPC will work together with them.
Yeah, I'd like to see us mention the Playmore, the preschool in a, when we say the necessity too. I know you mentioned the high school and whatever, but I didn't think I saw the preschool mentioned.
I didn't mention, we didn't mention the preschool or or anything like that. We did say something about pedestrians walking, motorists and pedestrians taking chances to cross over or enter Route 119. We could mention them directly. We could say there is a preschool in this area, but it's certainly one of the curb cuts.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We didn't mention it. But I think that over time, that area is going to become more businesses, residential, or properties that are zoned partial, but have been private residence are up for sale. There will be more.
Well, as far as I see it, with the smart planning, for us to be able to plan for that, yes, that is a developable area. More importantly, there has been a lot of conversation in regards to this border, 13 all the way to Harbor Village. Harbor, only because there really hasn't been much attention put to that, because nothing's been put on the map. You guys are looking to get this put on the maps, that at least if we are looking for other particular projects, it's already on the books. It's already something that we have a study for. So I think this is important for us to move forward on this, especially working with another town, even more so with a town that has a different planning agency than MRPC. So it shows that we're doing our due diligence.
So we will thank that person for contacting Pepperell. They did provide us with the town administrator there, or town manager?
The town manager.
The town administrator in Pepperell and the planning agent in Pepperell, I don't know if that's the official name, did provide us letters of support, and Broughton, I should have checked to see if I had a response left from them, but we're hoping to have letters of support from both towns, as well as from here, from Highway, for this study.
Yeah, I just want to mention that Pepperell was also very helpful when we were looking to put this on the Transportation Bond Bill. We were speaking to their state senators, different from our state senator, to make the go with the bond bill.
Senator, Senator Kennedy. Yeah, who's been very helpful with a lot of projects in them as well. So 100% behind the effort.
So I guess what I'm looking for from the Board of Selectmen is a motion to sign out of section, the UPWP grant submission, which will be a version of the draft that is in there, or we can meet again between now and the 28th, because that's when this is due. So how do we want to do this? We need a motion to assign this out of section to submit. And it would be the letter that you've seen the draft of, the map, which will change to just make the whole, you know, area, not write curb cuts or anything else on it, just study the area, and and the letters of support that we received from the various towns.
Same word.
Second?
Any further discussion? All right, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
That's Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calle, yes. Thanks very much. We will sign another question.
It happens with formatting and...
Always welcome. It's to be soft copy in pages. All right, moving on to the Highway Surplus Request. We had a Highway Surplus Request for wood chips. So there's their motion. Because we're informed.
Do you want me to read it?
Sure.
Sure. The, this was a letter from the James Smith, the Highway Superintendent. The Townsend Highway Department would like to declare the following as surplus. All quantities and values are estimated. Approximately 250 cubic yards of wood chips, approximately five to six cords of hardwood, various log links, and approximately eight to 10 cords of pine, various log links. Throughout the year, the Highway Department collects fallen trees, limbs, and debris from the edges of the road due to storm events. We stockpiled this debris temporarily. Once a year, we would like to have the debris removed from the property to make room for future storm debris and help maintain a clean and organized environment.
And this has no value, correct?
Correct. All of it has no value.
All right, so is there a motion?
I'm not sure what they're asking, what the motion is for. I'm sorry. I read it, and I still am not clear.
I move that we accept the declaration to the, what was described as surplus from the Townsend Highway Department.
I guess, Teresa, there's a surplus policy. So if you're getting rid of anything in any department, you have to surplus it and provide a value, and it has to be voted on by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, so we're just declaring that they can declare it as having no value. Okay. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Chad, for reading for me.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? Laurie, do you have something that pertains to surplusing wood chips, the Highway Department?
Yeah, I just had a question in reference to the cost. Is there a cost to the removal of it? I mean, there may be no value to, or, I mean, some people may find value in wood chips and wood for burning or decorative things, but they're declaring no value, fine. What is the cost related to the removal? That was just a question that came up in my mind.
There, it's just the people will come and take it.
Yeah, my anticipation is they're going to offer it free to the public.
Right.
So that would be zero cost for removal.
Okay, no cost to the town, and people can come pick it up. Okay.
No, we should look.
I should not, right.
Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calle, yes.
6:32.
All right, we can keep going. Moving on to 4.3, review the cost of living adjustment COLA for retirees. So Eric, can I ask you to say something about this?
Yes, this is a request that came in from the retirement system that Townsend is part of, to do a very small COLA adjustment to the retirees' pension plan. This is reflective of other adjustments that have been made across the system in both Social Security and other statewide pension plans as a result of the inflation that's going on. So they, they were sort of, again, a relatively small COLA request that they put through. We've been, various other... uh towns that are a part of the the um uh retirement system have have been putting out their their uh board's response to it and it's been overwhelmingly often.
So this is to increase from what would normally be three percent to five percent. And it's on a sixteen K base, so it isn't necessarily on the entire amount of our retirees' um retirement income. Uh, from the system, it's on the the uh lower sixteen K. So and um council needs to vote yes or no in order uh for this to either pass or not. It was all in the um.
Well, I also wanted to point out that um they did list um the retired participants per town. Uh Townsend has thirty-three individuals that are participating in the pension program that are. So I think this is something that um impacts the, you know, the people who have served the town.
All right, so is there a motion to increase um the cola for the Middlesex County retiring from uh to five percent?
I make a motion that we change the Middle Middlesex County Retirement uh uh Board Retirement Pay from three percent to five percent.
Um. The cola.
Cost of living allowance, allowing.
You know, second town.
All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm just a little um. It says we have thirty-something members and then it talks about the increase. Okay, never mind. I got it. No, I'm good. So we're talking about an additional three hundred dollars.
Yes. That.
Yeah.
To the match that we need to put in for the um county board, the retirement board. So, yeah. All right, so um. Uh, are we ready to vote? Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
That's Excedurianian, yes.
And Veronica Callia. All right, I'm gonna skip four point four and four point six. We will take them with two point three. During our meeting. Is that what you wanted to do? Yeah, okay. Um, so let's, let's see. Um, I guess we can stop and then come back. Well, let's go to four point seven.
We could do four point five.
We could do four point five, but that took would take me a little while.
Oh, okay.
So, and I don't want to lose my train of thought in the middle.
Yeah.
So let's go down to four point seven. Um, the maximum useful life. Uh, a fire department and highway department equipments. And again, Eric, could you speak about?
Yeah, so um uh in last year's capital plan, the town voted to borrow uh funds. Um, to fund uh uh several pieces of uh equipment. Um, two very large pieces of equipment. One was a uh a new fire truck. And one was for um, uh, I believe it was six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. One was, I'm sorry, seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And one was a um a six-wheel uh a large six-wheel dump truck for the highway department at two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, when we went out to bond for those amounts. Um, uh, to to officially borrow the money, be able to pay off those amounts. Um, uh, we bonded those uh two vehicles. Uh, the the uh the dump truck at for ten years and the uh fire truck for fifteen years. Um, you're not allowed to bond more than the useful life of the vehicles. Um, and therefore, um, we need to have a vote where the uh board of selectmen um uh sets the useful life of those vehicles. Um, at a a a date that would be longer than um the times that we've borrowed from. So, um, and that the this is consistent with what the information that we got from um the highway department and from the fire department is that the we would, so our request that the board vote to set the useful life of the fire truck at twenty years. And the useful life of the of the dump truck at fifteen years.
What about the forestry truck?
The forestry truck we borrowed for five years. Which is the typical amount of of time for a vehicle borrowing. Um, so, uh, you know, we would, we would, I mean, we would set that at ten years as a as a ten-year. But that's just a standard that we didn't ask for any extra length in borrowing that vehicle. So we'd say we the I would ask the board set that vehicle life at ten years.
So we're doing the um replace nineteen ninety-five engine two for twenty years.
Yeah.
The Ford three-two for ten years and the six-wheel dump truck with plow and sander for um fifteen years.
That's right. That's him.
And um I just think it's signed and voted by the clerk. So Teresa, you'll need to come in and do that. Um.
She, Teresa could authorize that to.
I can come in tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just gonna write the numbers in here. All right. Um, so we don't have a motion in this yet.
Not yet.
Um, so is there a motion to um set the maximum useful life of the fire truck to twenty years, Ford three-two to ten years? And the six-wheel dump truck with plow and sander to fifteen years?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, Teresa, how do you mo- how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
That's Excedurianian, yes.
And Veronica Callia. Um, and the last one, uh, four point eight. Now, let's let's get that into. Let's go to four point nine, the council on aging. Um, we need to um the council on aging has received um a grant from the Neshaba Valley Community Healthcare. It's the Neshaba Community Healthcare grant. And um what we need to do is accept that. So, um the the council on aging voted to accept the grant. And they are asking the board of selectmen to accept the grant. This is a grant of six thousand dollars for medical transportation access for towns and seniors and residents with disabilities. And Karen, I see you're on, so would you like to say more about this?
Well, one thing that we have noticed post-COVID is that our um our van is running at uh beyond breakneck speed and um um we were having a lot of trouble um fulfilling the needs of the people. Um, so when uh this grant came available, we had already been talking with the transportation uh group about the idea of getting a van that would just stay in town. And having a van that would prioritize medical appointments. And um the LRTA has um, I would say retired vans that are available from time to time. And they had one come up right at the time this grant came came available. And so, uh fortunately, the uh Community Foundation of North Central Massachusetts read our grant application and decided that, yes, it would be a good idea to finance um a year study to see how viable having a a van that it that focuses only on medical transportation would be. Uh, that would open up more times for us to take people for errands. We have been running people to jobs. Taking people to the train station, um shopping, some recreation as well. And um the big, big thing is medical appointments are all over the place in our area. We've got people going to Lemonster and Fitchburg and Pepperell and Groton and of course, Neshoba. Um, this will allow us to focus on medical two or three days a week. And then maybe perhaps start something that might in the future look like a bus route in Townsend with the other van. Um, so to explain a little further. The LRTA, when they heard, that's the Lowell Regional Transit Authority. When they heard that we were um interested in doing this, um they said that they would donate a retired van to us free of charge. We would only need to pay for the initial service, which is tires, mechanical service, and then they would do custom lettering saying that the van is the property of the town of Townsend. The LRTA did request that we continue to do servicing through them. And um so part of the grant is one year of maintenance through the LRTA. Why wouldn't we want them to service it? They know how to service these vans, right? Um, one year of insurance, which is five hundred dollars, an approximate amount of gasoline and oil. Um, we also asked for a cell phone, so a separate cell phone for that van. And some unanticipated costs. So the six thousand dollars um that we were granted will pay for the initial service, tires, mechanical services. Um, the maintenance contract. Um, probably most of the gas and oil. And the other um costs will come from um other sources. And those other sources, if you um know, the uh twenty twenty census has come through. And our formula grant has doubled. It's gone from sixteen thousand dollars a year to thirty-two. So at least for this year, I feel very confident that we can get this van on the road. And see how viable it is. And uh we're working out the details on scheduling drivers. The LRTA will continue to pay the drivers' um salaries through their grant that they give us. Um, so I think it's a win-win situation. And the the hard work is organizing the transportation needs and how to get people where they need to go. Which Donna Howard, who didn't quite make it there, she was supposed to be there tonight. Um, is very good at doing. And um and uh and making sure that the drivers that we currently have are allocated well to to take care of it. So, and then the reporting back to the LRTA and the Community Foundation. Um, I will, I have actually already created the spreadsheet um based on what reports we give to the LRTA that the Community Foundation will get as well. And the board of selectmen, of course. So what do you guys think?
So is there a motion to accept the six thousand dollar grant for the operating of the second van um by the senior center?
I make a motion that we accept the six thousand dollar grant to accept a van for use by NVHCA.
Second.
Um, any further discussion?
I would like to bring up one more thing. We have to figure out where we're gonna park it.
You talk to Eric.
The garage spots them.
So we'll pick that out.
Okay.
Need those solar panels at the senior center at the parking lot so they can.
When we get them installed, we'll make sure that one of the that they're high enough for.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Um, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Just Excedurianian, yes.
And Veronica Callia, yes. Thank you, Karen, and the rest of the senior staff for all your hard work on.
Yeah, thank you, Karen. Good job.
Thank you. All right, take care, you guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we're gonna go to our six forty-five appointment, which is with Ross Carey. Um, regarding the energy aggregation for the community. So Ross, would you like to join us at the table?
Thank you for inviting me back.
Oh, you're welcome.
Nice to see you all again.
We enjoyed seeing you too.
Um, on that last topic, I have been using the stove-seedway van extensively since I've not been driving. Suddenly occurred to me one day, oh, they have these services. Why don't we use them?
That's great.
Um, so it didn't get me here tonight, but I have used them in the path to go to meetings and so the COA services are are really great. It's a great way to address the lack of public transportation.
And and we are fortunate to be able to set them.
I agree.
So many areas, and some of it funded through the first.
Yeah, we do.
Um, tonight is an update on where we are on the community aggregation. Um, I've sent you copies of some draft literature. Um, so we've got something that describes what the program is, how it works, what people's benefits are. Um, we've got some information that's frequently asked questions. So questions that came up when we were here last time, such as what happens for people that have solar panels and contracts? You know, to buy back that power. All of that stays exactly the way it is. So if you're have a contract that says you're selling it back at at the current utility rate. It stays that way, even though you might be getting electricity through the aggregation at the lower rate. If people have low income provisions on the arrangements with the Uritel, those all continue. So basically, people, it's will be transparent. All that will change on their bill is where the electricity is coming from. And that will be selected after the RFP.
So I have the FICU, so um. I've been following this, but go ahead. I don't want to stop.
Well, you're at who can participate. So basically, it's all residents, everybody that's getting the basic service agreement now will automatically participate. So that's residences and some small businesses. The assumption is large businesses probably already have a purchase agreement for power and therefore they won't participate in this.
Um, but could they?
They certainly could, yes.
Okay.
Um, anyone that's already gone out and purchased electricity, because that was something that was the state allowed, I think, back in nineteen ninety-six. People could go out individually, buy their power. Those contracts will continue. So so this will not undo something that someone has already set up. It's only the people who are getting the basic service from the unit. And those will automatically go into the program. There'll be three categories or three price tiers of power.
It's on here somewhere.
Yeah. Another example might be well.
Where we are.
Yeah, I just talked to, but yeah. The selectmen will decide what they want the basic offering to be. And and typically it has, the state requires a certain percentage must be green energy. That's the low level. And then the selectmen can decide, well, we want an extra ten percent of green energy. So that would sort of become the default selection. The people don't make a change, they automatically get what you decide is the appropriate level. It's it's probably the minimum plus ten to fifteen percent. That's automatically happens. They will also have an option of getting a hundred percent green. Or the third option would be they want nothing more than the minimum, so they'd get the lowest price. There's an example of Millbury that's done um pricing and they've gotten the extra twenty percent of green and it costs an extra three cents a kilo. Which is still way below what. and it costs an extra three cents a kilowatt, which was still way below at that time what the utility was charging. But you'll be able to make those choices.
Alright, I don't mean to make everybody So, um, I had a question about that. Um, so it says, um, are, are people, if, if we the selectmen would choose to go with the highest tier where it's all green energy. I, I, I had a question about number fourteen. Is there a tax deduction for the purchase of renewable energy? And it says, yes, when the renewable energy certificate directs our source through green energy consumers alliance, the cost of direct for the optional plus product with a hundred percent renewable energy. So is that your high tier?
Yes.
Um, that's more than the cost of the basic product is tax deductible. So is that to every person in the community that they, if we, the Board of Selectmen were to choose the highest tier where it's a hundred percent green energy, does that mean all the consumers who are opted in and haven't opted out would be able to benefit from a tax deduction if the rate is better than the basic product?
I think the people that, that select that option or don't opt out, yes.
So it's not our choice as the selectmen on that tier. It's the consumers' choice.
Yes.
Hundred percent.
But I think the selectmen can decide, we want the default selection to be, you could say the lowest base rate, base green energy, you know, whatever the minimal amount the state requires, or what good energy finds happens most often is, is the town selectmen decide, we're gonna opt for an extra fifteen percent of green energy as the default automatic selection. So people can go above that with a hundred percent, or they could go below that with the minimum.
So they can select that individually?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. And if they were to select the all green, then there would be a tax deduction on their
For those individuals.
For those individuals, yeah.
If you're gonna ask me how much that is, I don't know.
No, 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 that's alright, but um.
That's what tax
Yeah.
Yeah, um, and and then here, can tax exempt businesses participate? Um, in or with, in in, I assume this means in community electricity aggregation. So if you have a tax exempt business here in town, say the historical society, I think there are five or six, right? Or maybe
The churches.
Churches, North Middlesex Cares, perhaps.
Yeah.
Um, they can maintain the taxes by sending a copy of their tax exempt certificate to the electric supplier.
Yeah, so, so any programs that are existing now would continue. And if somebody has a tax exempt program with Unitel, that would roll forward into this new aggregation.
Okay, but they would have to provide their certificate. Um, even though Unitel may have it on file.
Yes.
Okay, alright. Um, I think those are my two on there. Alright. Go ahead, Ross, I didn't mean to jump in there.
No, no.
But I read these and no jump question.
Well, they're not.
Here's a surprise.
Sorry.
Something's haven't changed, you know.
So here's, so let's go to number seven. Is there any risk? For participating in a community aggregation?
Well, it says there, no. And I would agree a hundred percent, there's no risk, because if you sign up for the program and a town meeting votes to authorize you to do this, good energy won't go to market until they think there's good pricing. And if the bids come in above what they expected, or above what you accept, you don't accept the bids, everybody continues getting the basic service from Unitel. So, one reason these programs are successful is because the town, through good energy, will go out to bid when the market is favorable. Unitel and the others, National Grid and EverSource, they're told when to go to bid. And it turns out not to be a favorable time in the early fall to go to bid for electricity. So good energy will pick a time that's favorable, you know, they may decide to wait two months and connect you with other towns so that they're purchasing a bigger block. Uh, they, they decide, you, you should get a shorter term contract so you'll be in sync with them the next time. But they can pick and choose when to go to bid. So I would say there's zero chance that they would end, end up with electricity that costs more than the local utility solely on a year-round basis. Um, you're not paying good energy for their services. They're collecting a tenth of a penny from the electric provider.
Alright, I'm gonna bump up to here because this is where that would go. Okay.
So there's no consultant fee being paid. I mean, they're getting their compensation by getting that tenth percent a kilowatt hour. So the numbers that are quoted to you, when we go out to bid, will include that, that piece. Um, so the residents essentially pay that, but a tenth of a penny is probably less than five dollars a month as for what they're paying for those services. And then they would save more than five dollars on the electricity, otherwise we wouldn't sign up for. It's no risk because individuals can cancel anytime they want. There's a lot of third parties out there now that are selling their energy programs. And some of them have really oppressive cancellations. And I may have mentioned this before, where one of them offered a thirty percent saving, but only for three months. And then when someone, then the price went up and charged someone three hundred dollars to, to cancel, there's no charge for a resident to cancel this.
And there's no charge for them to get back on it, if they wanna get back on it, and they're not automatically in.
Yeah.
So where was the part about you receive the uphill just like you always do? Uh, here it is, number nine. Um, if municipalities participate in a community electricity aggregation, who builds the individual recents and
So Unitel does, just as they are now. The bill will just show a different provider. If you look at your bill now, it will says where your electricity is coming from. It's somebody that they contracted with, will now be somebody that you've contracted with. Also, in that same vein, when your electricity goes out because a tree has taken out the wires, you call Unitel, just like you have before. Unitel is handling the distribution. They're handling bringing the wires, bringing electricity to each house. So none of that changes. The bill doesn't change.
And that's what's here. If municipalities participate, who maintains the electric system and Okay. Um, so it's the same as now.
Right.
Um, budget billing, all of those discount programs, anything that people are participating in would still be available.
Yes, yeah.
Alright.
And then the solar panels, I think this is a question that Teresa asked last time. What happens if people, the solar panels, if they've got net metering agreements, those all continue the way they are.
And, and actually, it's um, to your advantage to opt in, not to opt out, even if you do have an agreement. This is, I asked this question at a solar company recently. Um, because should you um, wind up being billed but not having enough credits? Should you wind up being billed, you would, you would get, um, assuming the community rate is the advantageous rate, you would get that rate
Yes.
For any electricity that you would need to purchase.
And that's sort of what the net metering is based upon, is you buy, you, you sell back to the utility, what you generate. And if you need some, you buy some at the current rate. Well, now it will be at the aggregation rate versus the basic service rate from Unitel.
Correct. I have a blank. Alright, um. Alright, this is what you were talking about, the tiered, the, the
Yeah.
The tier, alright, for renewable energy.
So as we get further along, we'll be able to give you some price differences between what the minimum green energy would cost versus what ten or twenty percent extra would cost versus what a hundred percent. And the board can say, we want the default or automatic option to be one of those three.
I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot. What is the minimum rate that state requires now?
It's twenty-two percent plus more in Rexel. It's like fifty-one percent. I think is what the minimum state is requiring.
Because you were for green energy right now. Nobody would be able to buy less than that.
Right.
But then we can bump it up to seventy-one percent or a hundred percent, whatever the, the board chooses. But those tiers will always be available, so even if we pick something that, a, a, a resident can say, no, I want the basic rate, or a resident can say, no, I want a hundred percent. I wanna pay for all green energy.
John said, use the town's, take sort of the middle one. It's got an extra twenty percent and then let people go up or, or down.
Decide what they're gonna do.
Alright, um, what's next? I put up another
Um, well, we've got some other documents that are posted, but if you actually wanna open up a new webpage.
A new webpage?
Yeah.
Seven pages?
Let me see if I can get. I thought I've turned that.
Right there, we're at the start page. We'll go over where it's, yeah, you're right there, and just type in this website.
So this webpage got populated this afternoon, so it is still in progress. Yes, whisper that, because it's not technically live yet. Um, but it will be. And what I'd like the, the board to do is agree that we will link it to the town's webpage.
Absolutely.
And is Harrison still your web guy?
Yes.
So it's in the newly registered website category, might be unsafe or contain inappropriate content.
There's no, there's no inappropriate content. There may be some inaccurate content, because we're still building it, but
Donna, click something to start. I can't see everything because there's too much done.
It may not.
Why not let me in?
Nope, it's loading.
Yeah, but it's solid, you know.
I had a question about that. Um, can I ask one question?
Yes.
Who maintains this website? And what phone number? Gets, in, in all the materials, you had mentioned this website and the phone number to call, which was the fourth town, 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 one town. So I guess I was curious what other towns do as far as the person gets the phone.
That's the good energy person.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Oh, isn't that nice?
All the questions we're gonna go to that.
They do all the heavy lifting.
Yeah.
Well, that's wonderful for their point oh oh, or whatever.
Yes, yes, they do all the heavy lifting.
Okay.
Um, I would add it to your number if you're going.
Yeah. Yeah, so the, the, the idea would be that um, we would, you know, put it front and center on the front page of our website. It, it would be on all of the, the, all of the media, but it would drive people with questions to, to someone of good energy, who quite frankly is the best person to answer the question.
Okay, good. So what should I bring up, Paul? Um, which one is, I brought up the FAQ.
Maybe the brochure mockup.
The brochure mockup, the, the, um, this one?
You wanna, I just wanted, I wanted to show you that it now exists. I mean, this is still in planning stages, which is why it says coming soon. But the idea is it will be a brochure, there'll be a postcard that gets, gets sent to people, explains how the, how it all works.
So this is the information, um.
Now, what I'd like to do is, as soon as we get it finished, where we get all the Xs filled in with real data, is, is to have you put copies of these out at various desks in Town Hall. Possibly the library, possibly the senior center.
Absolutely.
Um, we would print copies for you and send them to you if you could put them in the right places. We've already talked about getting a link on the webpage that will take them to the site.
Yep.
Can we include it and is there a tax, um, bill mailing that goes out?
Well, you're, you're, you're gonna mail out postcards, right? It is gonna be
It says, good energy pay the postage for all of this.
Yes.
Wow.
A good deal.
But still, I didn't expect the brochure to go out that way.
Yeah, well, the, the, the postcards are gonna go out that way. The brochure is separate.
When we talked about it, it was the marketing portion that they're gonna take care of.
Well, and it's the marketing piece that is the extensive part of this. Anyone could be a broker to buy you electricity. Because the difference is to do this marketing.
Okay, so here's the thing. We need to vote on this. We as a town need to vote on this at the annual town meeting, correct? So what information are we putting out prior to the annual town meeting? So that the residents can see this. I'm assuming the FAQs, and I think, let me go back there a minute.
There's, what is?
Um, what, should I have stopped at that?
Yeah, right, that was a good one. That was the one holding up here.
Okay, yeah.
Um, yes, I mean, that should be available. I mean, we're gonna send you copies. Once I check it again to be sure it says the right things, um. Have you put it at, at various counters in Town Hall, Library, Senior Center?
It would be nice to do a mailing on some of this, like one of these, there I think there were two of these. So it's one that was Townsend-specific, I think. The frequently asked question.
I mean, that is a good document in the sense that that sort of explains how it works. Um, if you go to the next page of, of that.
Next page of this?
Yeah. Charts are sort of hard to see, but it shows you that the aggregation price is lower than the winter prices. At least has been historically. Sometimes it's higher than the summer prices. But if you look, there's a greater savings during the winter, which offsets the the lack of savings during the summer. So net, net for the end of the year, the electricity is, is cheaper. And that's what those graphs are meant to show. Um, it will be an all-new graph for Townsend, because we're not in that timeframe. I mean, if you look at the one on the right side of the screen, look at, I think that's Unitel. I mean, look at the difference between the aggregation rate, the red line going across the middle, and the big jump that was taken during the winter. That's a huge savings for those people that were in that program at that time.
Well, the thing that I like the most about it is that you can budget better with the, being under this type of plan. It, there's no surprise when, when leaves fall off the tree. That's when I, I try to look down, like checking. So we're gonna have the, the marketing pamphlets and the, and the brochures that we can put around town. We're gonna have a, 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 a postcard mailer, mailer that's gonna go out to everybody in town.
I think the postcard is usually closer to when we've gone out to the RFP and we can say, this is your Unitel rate and this is your aggregation rate.
Okay.
And if it turns out the other way around, with the aggregation rate is higher, we don't do it.
Maybe we want this one. Paul, do you have a question?
I suggest, you have Earth Day coming up, having a booth with this set up. We already have a
We have a table reserved.
We have, Sabrina's got us a table, um, we've got the literature. It's in my calendar, I'm planning to be there.
Alright, so around town and Earth Day, and we can maybe put something up on the webpage and drop on and get here.
Yeah.
Information. Okay, so this one, and the FAQ. Alright, I need the, those are the FAQs, that's the thing we just looked at. This is our agreement.
This is the draft, and we should talk about a public hearing for that, um, in, in the later part of March, when, when this will be, have more details put into it. But I put that on the webpage, because I thought somebody in town might want to actually read the fine print. And we're trying to be totally transparent and open on this process.
The application point in March. Alright.
Um, and just if you can do it either before the eleventh or after the twenty-third of March.
March, okay.
Preferably after the twenty-third, I guess. That'll give us more time.
I think after the twenty-third is good because we have a budget.
Yeah.
Um, so after the twenty-third. Right. And that gives us time to advertise, et cetera. All right. All right, let me just put this back up there.
And I believe I sent you wording for the warrant articles go on the H M.
Mm hmm.
So you have that.
All right. So what I think I'd like to do is I'm going to stop the screen share here and see if there's anybody that has questions while we have. So if there is anybody um who has a question, I would um for Ross, I would entertain that now. And we will have a public hearing on this in late March.
Yep.
And there will be information at the um at Earth Day at the high school on the twenty-second of April. And lives around town. So any questions?
With senior hands. Um, so if I can get the board's okay to one finalize this document and then post it on this webpage and then turn that webpage live, link to the town's webpage.
Okay, so do we need a motion for that? Teresa, is that okay with you?
That's okay with me.
I'm looking at the website now, yeah.
Oh, did it come up on yours? All right.
Questions or need help, call Veronica Kelly.
You can put any name in there you want. Changes will go through me. I'll take it back to to good energy. Um, but it's good. It literally came live or this much live this afternoon, so I've not looked at every possible document. Um, and fix a few things that I noticed, but this will we'll scrutinize the next couple of days and I I can get a hold of Harrison to have him.
Absolutely. Yep. I'll let him know that you're gonna give him the link. On the front page.
I think if I can. Why did Stiff do that? Did it do this to you?
No.
Well, hopefully Veronica, hopefully we'll have the live one for everybody to see.
Yeah, that would be good. All right.
I think after that, it's we'll send you copies. You put them around town where you think they should be.
I I have one question.
Yes.
I'm sorry, this is um I just wanted to confirm if it was in the brochure. Restored mark. I would think it was the brochure. Yes, under feature. Municipally organized program approved by the town council. Do you mean the board of selectmen?
I did.
Or do you mean?
No, town, no, town selectmen is what I mean.
Okay.
And that's one of those things I'm working to get changed.
Very good. Thank you. Let me just check my list here before.
And we're not changing your your town government that it's been.
It's all part of the aggregation.
Okay, how do we get info out of the community? Look for the draft. All right, I think we've covered everything that I.
Yeah, I think it's it's going to be, you know, another meeting with the board, the public hearing for sure. We'll get some visibility in the webpage up. Um, questions can come into. We'll be providing someone to call when we've got questions.
Good.
Yeah, what we may need to do is move the second board of selectmen meeting to the twenty-first to the twenty-eighth.
In March.
And have the hearing on the twenty eighth.
If that works.
I see what you're saying, instead of the twenty-first. Yes, the twenty-first wouldn't work for Ross if we'd just run the meeting on week.
And have the hearing during the meeting.
Have the hearing during the regular reading.
Does that work for you? Um, Mark, are you available on March twenty eighth?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so um let's tentatively move the um meeting for the board of selectmen, that's Tuesday the twenty-first through the twenty eighth. And there's a public hearing. That's a good idea.
Yeah, well, we can post it. On the fourteenth and then we'll.
I won't be available the fourteenth.
But that was just, we're just, that's what we're going to post it. We'll put notice for the other meeting on the fourteenth.
Yeah, the meeting itself will be on the twenty eighth.
Yeah.
So the fourteenth is post-public hearing. Okay, all right.
That's what I had on my list. Um, is to get you okay for the documents, get you okay for the webpage, talk about the public hearing, we've done. And just to have a chance to talk about aggregation tonight in case anybody's listening wants to know what's coming, but. Um.
I'm good with all of that. Yeah, I think it's great. Everybody in town will be very glad when this happens, whether they're paying attention or not. Yes.
Well, I think what we'll do is it'll avoid the panic in December next year, when when the new rates would have come out from Urtel. And everybody would have said, oh, my God, my electric bill has just doubled.
Yeah.
At least have an answer for them.
Well.
Will know what the rate is.
It'll it'll be because Eric said it'll be the same rate for the whole year. And it will should theoretically be less than what Urtel's charged.
So we need everybody to come to town meeting and may third this? May third or seventh?
I think it's the third.
Third, I think it's my third.
I hope you get a vote for it.
Vote for energy. All right.
Well, this is something that 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 the board can do that actually will lower the bills for residents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why is it a big deal?
And we really do need that.
Yeah. Question was, can you really do that? And the answer is, yes, we can. And this is what we're doing.
Yep. Yeah, how long, how long can we go?
Well, we we we're not cautioned not to make promises.
Oh, yeah, you're not miracle worker, but.
But it's the type of thing that, again, if the rate isn't right, they just don't go with it. They wait.
Yeah, we have the power in our hands. Know where we're going to go with it.
Paul, did you have a question?
Yeah, to the year by year or do you do like a three-year bracket?
They will offer twelve, twenty-four and thirty-six month contracts and and we'll get to see what the vendors come, the generators come back with. Um, sometimes good energy has recommended the shorter term because then in twelve months, you'd be in sync with some of their other clients. One of those charts showed the thirty or forty clients they've got. If they can go to bid for thirty towns versus one town.
Right. We get locked with like Framingham and.
Yeah, no, I know. The more I I get the concept because jumping for taste, the town jumping for taste. And I think the last one they saw was fourteen cents. Kill a lot of health.
Yeah.
So you're talking a lot.
Compared to Urtel's twenty-one plus right now. And you you know that the municipal grouping that we did of all the town buildings, including the water department this year.
Good. Thank you.
So we got fifteen. Fifteen six or something.
Yeah.
Versus the twenty-one.
Yeah.
Right.
And have you seen bills for the new rate yet?
I believe Sabrina had. I don't think I've actually physically been there.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ross.
Glad to see you.
Yeah.
We'll be back probably the end of March sometime.
All right, excellent. Thank you so much. Right, so we have our next appointment is at seven thirty with the water commissioners and the water department. So we have five minutes. So let's go back to one of the two that we skipped. Um, we want to do ATM warrants. The dates for opening and closing. So um we we have talked about this before. Um, we wanted a motion to open the warrant on March the twenty-first. And to close the warrant on April sixth. And the warrant will need to be posted on April fourth. So um so I guess again, a motion for um opening the annual town meeting warrant on March twenty-first. We do these one at a time or do I do it?
That is all all one.
And closing at April sixth with posting happening on April.
So move.
Second. Posting on the eighteenth.
Um, posting on the eighteenth, which is two weeks prior. And that does not in include, I guess, the special town meeting warrant. Special town meeting warrant has a different concern, correct?
Um, I'll 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 double check.
Okay, because are are we doing the special town meeting with the that we did not get to do?
Yeah, one of the things in my neck, I I apologize, I don't want to take it too long, but I'm going to have a conversation with Adam about what process we're going to need to follow. I I think what we're likely to do is open and dissolve the first of the two special town meetings that we had.
Okay.
And include those.
And then just at at we'll have a special time meeting that includes all those warrant articles plus any new ones because then we don't have to worry about separate voting law.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because we would be working off three separate voting laws. The two we had to work off last time was a lot. Three, I think, would just be too cumbersome. So but I'm going to touch base with Adam and then come back on the final recommendation.
All right, so this motion is for the annual town meeting. All right, I just wanted to clarify. All right, so um Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa, more shots.
Jess, six and Duranian, yes.
And Veronica. All right, and um the other thing I wanted to talk under this is are we going to do a presentation to the public with the annual town meeting, um, questions, et cetera, so people can ask questions prior to annual town meeting, which is what we did last year. Are.
Like to also do that zone and see, I'll work with H M, see how we can.
Oh, yes, the people have been quite zooming questions they want to come in.
We might need a moderator for that. Um, in in the sense of someone who is keeping track of who is asking questions on Zoom or is there a chat or how do we raise our hands to get recognized?
Yeah, there's that. We definitely have to have somebody monitoring Zoom.
The Zoom, yes, that's what I mean.
To let, yeah, to let us know, hey, there's a question. Hey, somebody typed it in. Yeah, they have this question.
That's what I'm thinking, instead of taking live on questions that they would need to put it in.
Yeah, you can do that, too.
Come over to the whoever's going to be running the 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 hearing. So that we can read them. Right, instead of having them talk live on here, they put it in writing and then we can answer it.
And I apologize. It it was three twenty-one four six and then four eighteen, right?
Correct, yeah. All right, so um we need to date it up. Um, you know, when might be good? The day that we're not doing the meeting, the um twenty-first of.
March twenty-first, but that's where we're open, that's where we're opening the, yeah, that's where we're opening.
Yeah.
The warrant. It would have to be in April after the sixth. So you want to, you you want to do that on a Tuesday?
We have a meeting on the fourth.
I was just.
We have a meeting. We don't have a meeting on the eleventh and that is the Tuesday. And it's not for vacation.
Tuesday, the eleventh, when we don't have a meeting, might be.
April eleven.
Yeah, April eleven.
Because it'll be closed.
Uh, possible. April one.
Mm, it's a budget. It can be a busy. Can be a busy time.
Possible H M um moving.
Well, the fact that it's almost the end of February already is really warm.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll put that in as a possibility. All right, um. And we go to, we're skipping the D L P I O administration for now.
Yep.
Come back to that.
Yep.
Um, so meeting with the water commissioners and the water department to discuss the water department rate for twenty twenty-three and uh twenty twenty-four. And I would also like to bring in then four point four, which is the reviewing the contract for the wastewater treatment plant before you.
Water treatment.
When I say wastewater. Oh, I have it wrong in the agenda. Nobody caught that.
Oh, I caught it.
Well, you didn't say anything.
Well, I.
Well, if you catch it, you have to say something.
Well, I know it's a waste of a word. You don't get credit. You don't you don't.
Water treatment plant and then four point six review um the generator contract for Main Street and the.
And two hundred. The O P N contract. Yeah, yeah. That's what you meant.
Yeah, that was. So. All right.
Well, you have the engineers on and um Mike and Lou.
My name's Lou Sorocco, I'm a project manager at Tian Bond and with me tonight is uh Mike Schrader, who is going to be doing the majority of the talking, but I figured I'd take this opportunity to introduce myself because I'll be on camera.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to turn it over to you. Do you have anything that needs screen share at all while we're talking?
I know Mike does.
Yes, Mike. Mike does.
Mike does. Um, so partly, could you provide Mike with the ability to screen share? Because I don't think I have any documents on me.
No, it's going to be pretty much online.
Um. So Mike, it looks like you should have um the ability to screen share now.
Okay, thank you. Um, let me just get this. So. Okay, sorry about that. At least takes a little bit to uh figure out how to share. So uh, good evening, everybody, and um, as Lou said, I am Mike Schrader, um basically also a project manager at uh Tian Bond and I'm here to talk about the I think it's good news, right? So we have some um this is a uh, I guess, a revision of the prior study we did last year that talked about um, you know, changing your rate structure and funding the the needs of the water department. And uh in that interim, there was a um, I don't know, Dave, can we call it a windfall of the discovery of some previous uh funds associated with the MBTE uh relief fund that has now been applied to uh the water enterprise or is going to be applied to the water enterprise. And uh that does a nice job of offsetting um some other costs and things that have come up since. So it's actually a really short presentation that'll partially be um you know, guided by your questions. And as I I look at these, when I I put it together, I said, wow, you know, this is an expense summary. So this is showing um, you know, through twenty-four through twenty-eight, what the projected expenses are going to be for the water department. And, you know, it really doesn't tell you much here. What it's not telling you is um or showing you directly is the impact of that MBTE money. Uh, so one thing to note is that uh like most things these days, and I'm sorry, can you guys see that? It's I don't know if you're looking how far away your screen is. But we have the um, you know, the big project on the horizon is the treatment plant for PFAS, which, you know, I think we talked about it last time. I believe I presented to you um as well then. And it's it's one of those things that's almost impossible to plan for because it just happens. You get one test and all of a sudden you're, you know, in the PFAS world. So that um over time or developing the design, uh, the cost increased a um a little bit there. And we're also still waiting on some um principal forgiveness numbers and um you know, final um uh principal forgiveness for the PFAS plant as part of the S R F program. And I will tell you, another good fortune, if there is a a bright side to this, is that PFAS is a heavy um emphasis right now for the funding agencies and that is the uh Lou, you can back me up. It's the best kind of project to have right now is they're they're putting a lot of attention to it and uh you know, a lot of funding assistance. So this is the big good news is that um this big kink in the revenue uh curve here is the result of that almost million dollars of MBTE funds. that almost million dollars of M B T E funds coming into the enterprise. And um, you know, unlike most of the kinks we see in curves like this, it's a positive one, so it's really does a, a, a nice job of bringing your fund balance up um, to a hundred percent, over a hundred percent of your operating expenses. And what that does is, we had initially projected in F Y twenty-four to have um, uh, to be requiring a fifteen percent increase. So we had already raised the um, the rates and modified the structure at the same time in F Y twenty-three. But now, instead of fifteen percent, um, we're projecting five percent, and then instead of twelve percent, ten percent, and then it sort of evens out. And um, I can't see Dave anymore, but I know that um, you know, we've had a lot of discussions around what might be available for um, for additional principal forgiveness, uh, et cetera, and that um, the, the scenario that we're showing you here is conservative, it's based on what we think, you know, is likely to happen, but it's, like I said, it's pretty much good news all the way around, so that takes a big uh, chunk of that rate increase away, and it's replacing it with um, you know, the money from the M B T E, so it is a one-time hit or a, um, you know, supplement, so it's not, you know, it doesn't solve the whole problem, and this is actually a good way to look at it. Um, in the background here, these bars in the column here are the annual budget, if you will, or your revenue needs. And, you know, you're going from in F Y twenty-three, just over a million and a half to, you know, three, three and a half million in F Y twenty-nine, so it's basically doubling your, your expenses, which is, is not, you know, a great thing, cause that um, has to be paid for by the customers, but it's just showing you that um, one uh, you know, the combination of the influx of funds and I'm gonna say the uh, constant diligence of Mr. Vajan to exploit and take advantage of every opportunity available on the funding is going to help um, ease the impacts on your community. So, uh, this uh, right here, these tiered rates, when we looked at it before, um, I don't have it right in front of me, it was, it was, you know, fifteen percent more, so this helps take the um, that initial sting off of the second year increase, and I'm sorry to jump around here. Kinda doesn't wanna fit. So the, the last um, piece of this is to look at the cost, the annual cost of the um, of the water, and then we look at two um, industry standard affordability metrics. One is the percent um, of the median household income. And the, the mark there is two percent of median household income, as your annual uh, water cost would be considered to be a burden. And you're, you can see we're well below that, even at the projection. But medians um, are a funny thing statistically, and it's not, um, a lot of people felt that it was not representative, so uh, the way I think of it is this household burden indicator came out, you know, roughly twenty years after that median household income, because people were never satisfied that that was a good measure. So they introduced this new uh, indicator, which instead of looking at the median income, it looks at the lowest uh, quintile, so that lowest twentieth percent of your your residential um, income, and then it also looks at what percentage of your community is uh, at or below two hundred percent of the federal poverty level. So, you, you combine the two and um, we take the cost of that project and we add it in uh, an estimate for sure, for um, septic system cost, because, you know, it's supposed to be um, based on both. And, long story short, it, you know, according to the metric or the rubric, it comes out to be a low or a moderate low burden. And that's at the end of uh, you know, uh, two thousand twenty-eight or F Y twenty-eight, so that, I don't mean to speed through it, it's kind of fast, but it's also, uh, honestly, from where we were before, it's, it's sort of simple, and it's it's really is, uh, it's refreshing to be able to give good news, as opposed to the first time, when we were looking at this um, unanticipated expense. Uh, so, I would say, um, yeah, I was just checking, we include five hundred dollars a year for um, septic system costs, sort of a a combination of maintenance and um, you know, the fact that it is something that will be, have to be replaced at some point, so it's sort of a sunk cost, just to more fairly represent, uh, or to use the um, the indicator there. Was that too fast? I'm sorry.
Do you want question, Mike?
She asked a few more questions, Mike.
Oh, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have any questions.
No, you, you, are you ready to accept?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, I do have a little, just a little bit of trouble here, yes, go ahead.
Um, can you back up to the one that had the blue and the black and the data? All right, so um, there was found revenue somehow.
Yes, go ahead.
Just very briefly.
Yes.
I, I do wanna give credit to Melissa Dunn, the treasurer, who was the person who who found this extra almost million dollars in revenue, um, and, and uh, you know, sitting in an unused account, it was what was it labeled real well, and we figured out what it was for, and so, I, you know.
It was the receipts from the M B T lawsuit.
Um. The lawsuit that was filed about two years ago?
Oh, no, no, almost fifteen, twenty years ago.
Oh, really?
Money was deposited before, sometime before two thousand fourteen, and it's just been sitting there, and so.
And nobody knew it.
She was doing a review of all the, the kind of darelift accounts and found it.
Don't, don't we have our account audited every year by, is this different from that?
I, I, I don't know, and I did, I don't think there's anything that was wrong with it. Wrong, it was.
Other than nobody knew about it.
The water department obviously had la- lost the institution of knowledge that it was there. And so it just kept getting kind of rolled over, but I, I, so again, I do wanna give Melissa credit for, for finding it and not just kind of ignoring it, but, but finding it and figuring out what it was.
So a large part of the rate increases were to rebuild the emergency fund, you're, you're supposed to have.
Right.
Say two times your operating budget in reserve, in case you have an immediate failure, you have the funds to go and fix it immediately. We had pretty much to get ready for PFAS and take care of some of the things that emerged. We had pretty much emptied every cabinet we could find, and so part of the reason why the initial uh, rate increases were so steep is we needed to rebuild that, that reserve, so that.
What does M B T E?
Methyl, tertiary, butyl ether.
And so you added it in gasoline?
Yes.
You, you know.
Used to be.
When I um, when I heard that, I, I thought the same thing, ma'am, that it, that was a big thing, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, and now you don't hear anything about it. And we never heard what PFAS was until three or four years ago, and it, and I can see how someone could look at that money and you know, M B T E doesn't um, jump out at you what, what that would be for, so I, I uh, support the um, applauding the treasurer.
Yes, and she, she, she talked me out of stealing it for the general fund budget.
Better be, cause you can't run.
Yeah.
It's, it's hard, yeah.
Yeah, we, 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 yeah, so we, we hunted it down and we.
So this is a suit that the, the town signed onto many, many years ago, similar to the suit that we signed on to like two years ago for PFAS.
Correct, yeah.
So it's possible that in another ten years, we could see a settlement from that.
Actually, the bellwether case, the bellwether case started January first, and it, it's ongoing right now. In, to the Maryland or South Carolina, I forget which, but there is a bellwether case for PFAS. And that's the, that's the one.
Beginning, that's.
Right, and this is separate from the one that Attorney General, um, well, Governor Healy now, but Attorney General at the time, signed on to twenty-two other states. So there's, there's like three or four.
And we'll take time now.
And we're in two of them, yeah.
Oh, good, okay. So that's a good thing, all right, so that might get us another little green spike somewhere.
And, and also, that is listed for thirteen point two percent forgiveness, which is the the uh, disappearing communities, but we, I, I got a letter from the E P, ex- telling me to expect more. And it looks like altogether, we're probably expecting fifty-eight percent forgiveness.
Bit, what?
On the loan for the PFAS treatment.
For the PFAS, okay, so instead of.
Yeah, we should wait for those numbers to finalize by the.
But that's why, that's why we only have thirteen point two, when, but I've been told there's two other programs that were eligible for, and and if that all comes from version, it's fifty-eight percent.
Okay, so that could be another little.
Yeah, so that's why we, and that's why we decided to go year by year, and not accept the entire rate structure a- as it was presented, cause it won't be going down. So I think that's a, that's a very strong point that I wanna, I wanna reiterate, is that, because I was part of the, the discussion um, that the water commissioners and the water superintendent all agreed that instead of accepting, you know, these, uh, a tiered rate hike for five years, they were going to review it on a yearly basis based upon um, how the coffers looked, how the, the lawsuit looked, there's a lot of factors involved in it. And a very smart decision that the, that the commissioners made was that we were gonna revisit this every year. Um, had they not made that decision, we probably wouldn't be having this discussion, because it would have, they would have agreed to have the rate hike for the five-year period. But because they are, it is adjusting the rates, and I think for the fiscal year twenty-four, um, as opposed to fifteen percent is what it was scheduled to be, and then a drop down to five is an incredible savings, not only for the townspeople, but it also allows the water department to actually get some of the work done, that they really need to get work done to prepare for the, the plan.
I, I, I'd just like to add something to, Dave and everybody over at the water department, Kevin, Ryan, Brenda, um, Ron, Ryan, and Alex.
We have Donald Leonard.
I'm Jessica.
And Jessica. Um, and Misty, which is, I have, we've, um, they've done an incredible amount of work in-house. Um, and, you know, they've taken, all taken our lumps with a lot of the stuff that's going on. But I get, I wanna publicly commend the staff. They have been dedicated um, through some extremely trying ex- um, circumstances. And um, as, you know, as a commissioner, I just wanted to say thank you for that, so.
I see.
But yeah, that's, that's what we agreed to, was the, the five percent. Um, technically, you're supposed to do anywhere from two to three percent annual, because your costs as a water department see, um, always, you can skip a year or two there, it's not recommended, but you can. Um, but there is some sort of increase that should be, you know, that you should expect as the water department. Your cost of chemicals go up, electricity seems to fly away, so. That's about it.
I see that Teresa has her hand up. Teresa, do you have a question?
Yes, um, on the original uh, set of these slides, I don't know if you have it with you. Um, you had a, a third one of these slides that showed um, five tier rates, the three tiers that you just spoke about, but it also talked about two residential tier rates?
Yes, and that.
Non-residential tier rates, do you have that slide?
Uh, yeah, that is what um, we're basing this on, that was the um, approved rate structure. So in that prior uh, version, that was alternative B tiered rates, and that is what this is based on, and.
We have four tiers um, that apply to everyone, but then we capped certain industries, farms, and the schools at tier two.
Sorry about that.
So, the non-residentials are, what, what does that represent?
I don't have the one, what they're discussing in front of me.
The, the, the non-residentials are the schools, public buildings, um, something like stairlights, the bo- the farms, and and the, the general businesses.
So why would there ever be, be a rate for non-residential, why would a resident ever have a higher ra- rate than a commercial business?
So here's the explanation. Irrigation, pretty much, um, you have to have a tiered rate structure if you're gonna meet S R F criteria. Well, let me put it to you this way. If we had to cap the schools, the schools still would have used the water and it would have gone to the taxes. Um, if you had increased or didn't cap farms, it would have made it extremely difficult for some of the farms to exist. Which goes to your property taxes, because then it would fall more so on the residents. Same with some of the larger industries. The reason why they were capped was to protect the tax rate and the property taxes of the residents. Um, they still use enough water that um, it doesn't upset or offset the tiered system. But in part, the tiered system is set up to engender water conservation. Um, if you're going to use more, you, you, for like irrigation and outdoor needs, then it has been decided that you should have to pay more for it. Um, if you look at anything on the state's water conservation, on NASTY E P, uh, you go to E P A, um, you will find that.
So that, that non-commercial rate is only that low if they stay underneath a certain cap?
No, it's based on the usage that was determined, which ones would be on there. When they hit the tier two, they don't go any higher. If you're a resident and you go above tier two, and you go into tier three and tier four, um, usually it is from irrigation. Mike, did I explain that right?
Uh, yes, you did a good job, and I, I will say um, that commercials always tricky because it's um, you know, they could be bottling uh, you know, soft drinks or making coffees or something and, and using a lot of water just because of the size of the operation, but not necessarily um, you know, uh, using extravagant water use or excessive water use, so it, it's always um, tricky, but yeah, that was that was uh, well, what.
Okay, thank you.
And I also, if I may, wanted to commend you also on the year-by-year approach. Um, we, we show more than one year at a time, and really, that's to do what you're doing tonight, which is to connect the water department with the um, with the selectmen, with the water commissioners um, in the, in the town, so that you can have an idea that what might be coming next year, or um, you know, I'm sure the water department can tell you that it's pretty common, you know, to get a rate increase or to get a, a project funding or whatnot, and then you come back the next year and everybody looks at it, like, well, what are you doing back again? We, we did that last year, you know, and it, it unfortunately is, is a, continues to uh, increase. And I think of it as rate setting, you know, more in a continuum, where it's a conversation every year, and then you check in and say, well, you know, we did a little better on this and a little worse on that, and see how it um, goes year by year versus setting them for five years and then either being stuck with them or, you know, having to, you know, reverse your position, I, I think, I like yearly. Personally, I think it's a good way to go, especially with the way things are changing currently.
So can, can I just ask a pretty basic question?
Yes, ma'am.
So should people expect an increase in water rate next year, though smaller than what it was expected? If that's true or false?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, so it's.
We won't know, we won't know specifics until we get more finalized numbers on the principal forgiveness, um.
So that could factor into this year, or I would think.
This year is, this year is like, yes, so when we look at it, when we look at it next December or January, um.
So.
They, they will come forward, cause they'll have better numbers uh, at that point in time on our revenue and things like that, that time. That time bomb, Mike and Lou, um hopefully Mike can come back and um let us know where we stand and, you know, if we're. Ahead of where we should be and, and if the, the things are more pronounced on, on the project and the, the. The finances behind it, um, that those numbers, those numbers are artificially high because they are um conservative in their estimates, they always have been. Um, that's why it kinda, you know, like you said, it's good news that we're at five percent, not fifteen, um, so.
Alright.
I don't get many of those, so I gotta save the moment.
I hear that.
Alright. So anything else that you wanna discuss as far as the water rates go before we go on to the other things we need to do for you guys? Anybody else?
I, I do wanna say that we did not take this lightly. We didn't take the one previous to this lightly. Um, it's why a lot of thought went into it based on the effect it would have on taxes with businesses and schools. Um, we realize everybody's hard. We wanna get the system up and running the way it should be running as quickly as possible for everyone, and. The only way we could do it is you have to fund the projects and. That's what we're trying to do.
Alright, well, thank you very much for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Mike, thank you, Lou.
Thanks, guys.
Pleasure. Stay in touch.
Yep.
You're right.
Good night.
Night.
You good night. Alright, so moving on to four point four, the contract for the water treatment plant OPM. Um. So would you like to talk about that?
So the contract was awarded to, after a bidding period that we started in November, we opened in. December, we awarded in January, and, and then it took.
So I think a month, you.
Right, it took all this time to get the contracts together. The awarding body was uh Ewing Electric, one hundred sixty one thousand.
Okay, you, we're talking about the OPM contract.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's on you.
Uh, is that, yeah, you were, you were going right to the generators. Um, uh, so the OPM contract, as the uh, the board of chair members, we worked really hard to try to push through an, an OPM process that was as abbreviated as we could get. Without kind of losing um uh kind of legality, uh, so. When the uh, the uh. Uh, the timeline was, was finished, we did it to entities, two engineers did bid on the project. Um, the OPM process is a non-price-based review. So um, we had three folks, uh, it was the two members of the Board of Water Commissioners and Dave. Who did an evaluation of all three of the entity, entities and resilience DE. Uh, was chosen to be um the responsive entity, uh, there, uh, uh, once they were chosen, I was led to discuss price with them. Um, uh, their price came in at fifty eight thousand dollars for the entirety of the project, which is underneath our seventy five thousand dollar limit. Um, um, they, you know, I, I mean, I, I don't have as much experience in this stuff, obviously. As, as uh Todd and Dave do, but the firm really looks like they've got a lot of experience, I mean, both firms look, they had, like they had a lot of experience, we weren't gonna, I think. We, we did have a bad firm apply, we had two very good firms apply. Um, the, the one we have, I think, has a very good reputation, and the specific engineer who's gonna be our, our OPM lead. Um, has a lot of experience working with them. Yeah, you know, they're, they're experienced, both of them were very experienced in SRF, which is gonna be key to this, uh, doing pay downs and things like that. Um, it just uh. One did, you know, they were close, let's put it that way, um, and Eric put it very well. The other environmental firm was, you know, was, was not, wasn't that they weren't qualified, they were just a couple of little things that, when they're that close, pushed one over the other.
Yeah.
So we're at this point, just right, I think, ready to, if, if, I, I'd be asking for authorization from the board of selectmen to sign the contract. Um, for fifty eight thousand dollars for the uh, for this.
Well, to two years, I think.
Yeah, yeah, we wanted to make sure, make it totally all.
Do they, did, did the person have specific project management experience or just experience?
No, they, both, both firms had pro- OPM experience.
Yeah, both firms had, had water treatment play an OPM experience, yes.
Thank you.
So we got, uh, like I said, we got really, I mean, there was two very, very well-qualified firms that came forward, so. Um, at this one time, if I could just get the authorization from the board to sign the contract, we'll, we'll get it out and get them on board.
Alright, so is there a motion to um. Uh, have our town administrator sign the contract for the OPM? For the water treatment plant?
I'll make a motion that we sign the agreement. Uh, while the town administrator just signed the agreement for the town of Townsend for an OP. Uh, 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 owner's project manager for the water department.
Second. Alright, um, any further discussion? All those, is Dave or Teresa, roll call, both, how do you vote?
Teresa Amos, yes.
That's six and remaining, yes.
Alright, and going down to four point six, this is the water department um generator contract for the Main Street and the Cross Street well. So um, Dave, would you like to give an overview of the contract?
Short form, please.
So the winning bidder was uh Ewing Electric, one hundred sixty one thousand seven hundred dollars. As you can see, it's a, it's a rather small, small book, and. Uh, the first section is all about bonds, bond, bonding and insurance, there's a job description in there, a section on prevailing wages. Uh, minimum equipment standards, there's a whole, a whole section in there. Uh, including, it's gonna be a gas generator. And uh, and pretty much that's it unless you have questions. It was.
I wondered why that wasn't in SharePoint, but now I understand why.
It's been added in. So um, I guess my only question is, this has been paid for through our funds?
This is being paid through offer.
And we are within the amount that was allocated.
On behalf of my board, because this was, these generated were an added consideration, I'd like to thank your board by accepting them in the offer. Um, it takes, well, no. It takes a group effort on a lot of this stuff and, and working together, and I think our two boards have done a pretty good job of that over the last couple of years. I just wanted to mention, thank you.
Alright, so do we have a motion? So, or do we want to do questions prior?
A motion to approve, and then we can discuss.
Um, a motion to approve um our town administrator signing the contract?
I think just approve the contract because we all have to sign it, you have to sign it, Todd has signed it, and I have to sign it.
Okay, so.
Being signed it?
Uh.
Wow.
He does?
Yeah, yes.
All of us.
Oh, yeah, everybody has to vote, yeah.
Okay.
This, this is a, this is a major war with.
Yeah.
Comes on in a different.
It's a big one, yeah.
Different thing, because almost all contracts for the town were signed by the sweatman or the town administrator, we saw.
The other ones that count is the sweatman's.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm signing as the chief procurement.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
As opposed to.
And I had my strategy assigned.
Okay.
And then, and then.
I think it's just motion to approve.
Motion to approve the contract for Ewing Electric for the um. Generators for the Main Street and Cross Street well.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Second, thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
Alright, um. Now, are there any further questions before we vote? Alright then, seeing none, um Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa Amos, yes.
Jess, that's the remaining, yes.
And Brian, good job, yeah. Alright, um. And are we signing now, or are we signing, uh, second?
Well, I think we're gonna have to sign out of session because native there.
Tomorrow, and I'll take your mate, and he, he can sign today.
Yeah, I can sign tonight, yeah.
We're signing out of session.
So Teresa, you'll be in tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll come in first thing in the morning, before, I got a doctor's appointment, I'll come in before that.
Thank you. Um. I think that's it for the water department, alright? Yeah, thank you, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright. Who else?
So, Madam Chair, we got two forty eight o'clock.
Um, oh, we have an, an appointment, don't we?
Yeah, but I don't.
Do we have Andrew?
I don't see Andrew.
Did he wanna meet with us, or?
Yeah, he was gonna come in.
Is the door locked downstairs?
No, I could come in.
Uh, let me just pop down and check, and I'll.
Okay, thank you, maybe he doesn't know where we are. Maybe not, but I wanna find.
Yeah.
I'm gonna shut my camera off and take a two-second break then, I'll be right back.
Yeah, we're, we are on a break for a short bit. I have to go. Yeah, here.
You're welcome.
My son, but I want to, but you aren't going to come to anything.
You guys have a good evening, who's known again?
It is.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
You too.
Hey.
Hey, thanks. Um, so Madam Chair, I did not see him, he was a lot.
Should we move this to the seven?
Well, I could, maybe I can just describe it very briefly.
Alright.
And then if he does decide he wants to come in, um, we could set up another time for him. Uh, this is uh the proprietor of a good farm in Ashby. Who has come forward a few weeks ago with a proposal to hold a farmer's market uh in town. Um. Uh, he was uh thinking about potentially having it at the, if the, if the, the town approved it. Having a farmer's market at the Common. The, the, the parking lot of the Common. Um. Um, and uh, his initial thought for doing it, say, on like a Thursday afternoon.
Hang on one minute, um. Teresa, are you there?
Sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. Um, having, his initial thoughts were having it say on a Thursday afternoon, um, so he could capture uh afternoon rush hour traffic, people going from work. Um, initially talking about having a, a, a one, a ten-foot tent with produce from. His farm, um, but potentially opens the, uh, having other folks if they wanted to participate, he's more than, more than willing. To have other folks participate, he thinks that would be great, he's just talking about him just doing it for his, for his farm initially.
So if we, um, I guess my question is, when is it, we don't have an agri, agri social committee seated, which is normally where I would put this. If others want to participate, how does that work? Do they contact you, that's the same way Andrew did? Or do they contact Andrew, like, do we need a market manager, um, that sort of thing, um? Just curious.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think they would initially contact the town if they wanted to participate, and then. We just kinda put him in touch with Andrew about timing. Uh, I'm assuming if he decides to go through with this, what we'll do is we'll ask him for a schedule.
Okay.
When he wants to start, the day that he wants to do it, day or days, and I'm assuming he's gonna do just one day a week, that's typically how it's done. The hours that he would wanna have. That, and once he presents that timeline, then if another person came in. That, oh, hey, I thought that this was happening, we would already know. When it started, now when it was going, and when it ended, and we would just put that person in extra danger to say, hey, here's another vendor that would like to be there. Please, you know, arrange for who's gonna be sitting where.
So do we wanna put parameters on what constitutes a vendor? In other words, do we want someone selling toys or used books? Or do we want it to be things that are produced? Um, you know, produce only, do we want craft? Do we need to put parameters on it, I guess, is what I'm, on what a vendor is? I don't know, I mean, I've never run a farm market, so I don't know.
I, I think.
So that it doesn't become, so that it remains the idea of a farm market.
Um, I, 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 I think. At its outset. Uh, you do everything on a case-by-case basis, and, 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 and I don't think we, I don't think we wanna, uh. Set rules that might artificially restrict it in a way that something comes along, we have to go back and change that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, 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 I think, um, you know. Ideally, it wouldn't be, it's not gonna be a space where for, uh, where, you know, other, for, for non-produce and produce-related items. Um.
Okay.
But, but I, I think what we do is we, if Andrew says, do you want us to do it? Yeah, if somebody comes along that's not doing what Andrew's doing. Then they need to have a conversation with the board about what they're doing.
Alright.
You know, and then if it goes and we feel like it's starting to get too busy, then maybe we need to set up some parameters. But I think right now, this is something I, I know that several folks have talked about, about wanting to have in the town, and so. Um, we have an entity that's, you know, while not a town, the business, the business is next door in Ashby. That's interested in coming and, and doing it, and said he'd be open to having any other farms come and participate as well. Um, I think that's the kind of, um, you know. Uh, I think that's a good, a good seed to start something like that. And I think the common, at the intersection, I would really, at one nineteen and thirteen is really where you need to be in town.
The only other place, and I wouldn't put it there now, would be the field behind Town Hall, but I would wait until it was established.
Yeah, it's, it's just the, the visibility, which is the challenge there, where if it's out here, especially if. If we talk to the historic society and figure out if there's allowable signage that could be on.
You can do temporary.
Yeah, so temporary signs on one nineteen pointing to a farmer's market back where the parking lot is.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know.
Uh, go ahead, Lou. Madam Chair, if I may, um, just quickly, the first thing, I think it's a great idea, but the first thing that came to mind was the Board of Health. And have they been consulted regarding uh food being sold on the Common? That was the first thing that came to me, because we've done things on the Common before, and the Board of Health had to be involved, wasn't necessarily just like this. It was more on the cooking end and uh ba- but even, but even then, we had like baked goods and stuff like that, so the strawberry festival that we used to have. So I just mentioned that quickly, I think it's a great idea, I don't think it, it should be a downer at all, but you may have to consult with the Board of Health.
Yeah, the Groton Market, I know for sure the Groton Market, and I know they have more than just the one vendor, but no matter what. Vendor you are, whether you're selling honey, whether you're selling fudge, whether you're selling uh tomatoes or anything, you have to have a license. Your house has to be inspected um for, for you by the Board of Health, even if it's just a, a tomato out of your garden.
Um. Is that true for people, other people that sell, um, produce in town?
In town here?
Yeah.
Yeah, at Aox Farm, and he is approved, yeah.
So he has a certificate from the Board of Health?
Yeah, and when he goes outside of his area, he has to get, they, if you go to any of the sites and you sign up, it has a, a link right to the site, like if you go right now onto Groton site, it, it'll have a link right to the, the, the farmer's market and have a link to the Board of Health to get, uh, up then.
So the, the Good Farm, he, he does it in Boston right now, he's, he indicated one of the reasons why he'd be interested in doing around here is to be able to provide produce to folks that are local, in addition to, to trucking it all the way into Boston, so I, I have no doubt that you know, he'll, we could just have him contact the Board of Health and he, you know, I'm sure there's any kind of, uh, 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 like.
They'll have to get it wherever his, uh, his garden is, his home is, he has to get it from them, and then they reciprocate it, he has to say so, if he lives in Townsend, he has to get it from Townsend, if he lives in Lomond Street, he has to get it from Lomond Street and then Townsend says, okay, you have it from Lomond Street, you can sell in Townsend.
Yeah, so like I said, he, the, the fact that he does in Boston, to me, means he's already familiar with his product.
Okay.
Um, I wouldn't worry about that, but we'll make sure, we'll definitely mention it too, um, if that's something.
My, my concern would be, I know Groton's gotten very big, they have about twenty vendors there every Friday night, and it, it does get heavy in, into the traffic, so I'm not sure if the common's the best place traffic wise, but we can deal with that if, if it gets big.
Yeah, I mean, my, my, I, I, I hear exactly what you're saying, I, I, I do think that, like, having people parked in the downtown around the common, because they're on the ground doing shopping at a, at a farmer's market, is the kind of traffic that we wanna see in the downtown, as opposed to just people just driving through. And I don't think it's gonna add traffic, I don't think there are gonna be people who are gonna come during rush hour to go to the farmer's market, I think what it'll be is people are already driving down this road, seeing it and stopping, and anybody who wanted to come that, that wasn't in rush hour, was either gonna come before or after and stay out of the traffic, because that's.
And there, there is parking along the side of the common, not just the parking lot in back, you could also park at St. John's from off across. Um, nobody's gonna be parked very long at a farmer's market.
Yeah.
Um, uh, at least when there are a few vendors, if it gets larger, we might have to reconsider, wouldn't know if we wanted.
I know, yeah, those two problems that you wish for.
So do, do we want to, um, say, sure, we have, we approved this and we'd like them to come in and talk more and make sure, you know, answer the questions about the permitting, if that's required?
Well, I think that's the, the sort of thing that we can do.
Awesome.
We could do offline, I don't think, I don't think that's something that we necessarily need to have a, but I do think
Yeah.
the board would approve it, we would say, uh, you know, you could come back and just have a conversation with the board when he's available.
Um, so.
My other question would be, Eric, um, you know, I know Groton, they don't make most of their money by selling their produce, they make most of their money by renting out a ti, you know, a table at thirty, fifty dollars a pop for somebody else to sell their, their honey or their fudge or their cookies, whatever they're selling. So I wouldn't wanna see that happen, I wouldn't see, wanna see a town square to become an opportunity for him to make money off of other people selling products.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree.
I don't think he's renting out tables.
Yeah, that wouldn't be, that, no, that's not what would.
And I don't think the town is renting out tables at this point either.
Yeah, we wouldn't be charging and, and we wouldn't, certainly wouldn't allow him to charge.
Right.
I just wanna make sure that, that, that's clear, it'd be up to the town if other people can come in and he, he couldn't collect a fee from them.
No, that would be like the mafia bathroom.
Well, the other thing that.
You said that to a girl from Sicily, I mean, that is just so wrong in so many ways.
The other things that, that sometimes come with, with things like farmer's markets and food trucks. Um.
So we don't have policies on these things, um, particularly. Uh, um.
And so, again, that's something for us to think about, it's certainly not gonna happen, you know, when, when Andrew starts, he's just gonna come and set up his tent, um.
Unless someone else hears this conversation or told about this conversation, and then you have a line out the door, which could happen, in which case we might need to address this a little more.
In which night did you say?
Well, he was, again, it's not set in stone, he was initially talking about Thursdays.
Well, that won't work, because that's band concert night.
That's exactly what I, I don't think the, the common is the proper place for this, to be quite honest, I don't think that it, it's, you, you, there's a lot of things that are going on within the common. Um, y- yes, I know traffic wise, it's in a great spot, but.
But what time do, um, what time do, uh, do the band concerts start?
I just wouldn't want the, the mixing of it.
I, I, I think that we have this space here, we have Jeff Street parking as well, I could see that turning into something bigger. Um, if, if there's an interruptive row. Um, I just, I, I would caution, you, you know, the, the common to be used for something like that, there, you know, we don't know what kind of, um, garbage it's gonna produce, we, we have a problem with garbage now in that area, that's gonna increase as well.
Well, we would have a garbage problem back here then too.
No, I under, I understand, but it's, it, it. I think it's something that we need to, we really need to vet out, it's not, I don't believe it's an easy decision.
I think it is, maybe we want a different night, um, I think it's worth trying. Um, I guess it's what I'm saying.
I, I think it is as well, but I do not think the common's the right spot, I think we need to think of a better spot.
Would it be, if it were a different day, would it be a no case spot?
I'm wary of the common from the beginning, I have to say. And I really thought we had talked about different spots and people, other people have come to us with different things, and we talked about behind the, uh, the town hall, we talked about, um.
I first shared streets.
Closer to the rail trail.
Well, there was a, a, a shared streets and spaces, what, three years ago?
It was the very first round, I think.
Yeah, that, that they wanted to put space in this area here, and farmer's market was one of the auctions that were available, uh, or the options that they.
Things that was included in the grant.
Which was, you know, in that spot over here, which I, I think is, makes more logical sense. Um. I just, there, you've got, there's a lot of work being done in the gazebo, there's a lot of, um, um, you know, things to consider in regards to the band concerts and, you know, all of that, I'm just, I agree with you, Teresa, I'm not really sure if the, if the common is the right place for that.
There was a, um, a farmer's market that was held in town on the common, it was when, um, uh, Colin Knapp was the selectman, he was the one that organized it. Um, I know because I went to it, and it was on the backside of the common. It was done like every other week, every third week, it was like a Saturday morning, and it was when there were not, um, other events going on in the common, uh, but in the morning. Um. And it, it, no, no one ever, I don't know why it fizzled out, but you know, there were certain, maybe three or four days over the course of the summer when it was held, this was probably twenty fifteen, maybe, twenty fourteen in that time frame. Um, and, uh, and it was on the common, and it didn't, I don't think it caused any consecration, but, um, and I think Aox Farm was one of the people that was there. Um, it wasn't a huge market by any means. There were maybe four to eight vendors, I would say, maximum. Um.
I mean, I, I, I completely agree, that if it's in conflict with something like the band concerts or some other scheduled thing on the common, that, that's not something you should try to run at the same time. Um.
Unless you're gonna be early in the day, like a nine to noon market.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Wanna hit people on their way home.
I was about to say, I don't think.
Three to six.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I think of that, I, I think if you were gonna do it right, you would do it in such a way that it would impact the, the band concert, so you wouldn't wanna do that. But on a night when there wasn't a band concert and the common is not being used for any organized activities, I think having something that would bring more people out to that space would be a good thing, for, for this sort of utilization, that's not, that's not, um, that, that's relatively low impact, you know, I know that, that in, in, in my hometown, they have a Thursday farmer's market that goes into a park, and they, they're not on the, on the parking lot, they go into the park and every day, everyone sets up their tents, and it's Thursday, starting at noon and going until seven, and they have, it's, they've got all sorts of vendors, there's probably twenty or thirty vendors in the park that's roughly the same size as the common. Um. Um, and it just, it draws a ton of people to that space and the surrounding businesses
Mm-hmm.
Um, every Thursday during the, the summer. Um, and so I see this as, as the possibility of being something that people would come to the space to you, to, to, to participate in. Um.
And that's my problem, Eric, because, like I said, I've gone to the one, I, I go to the one in Groton all the time, I've gone to other ones as, as well, and it does draw tons of people, and it does draw a lot of little people, uh, young, younger children. And they're not always, they, they love running around, because they feel like now they're out in the country, whatever. And we got a gazebo that's not safe for young kids to be running around it. Those are not the safest areas with traffic wise, with one nineteen, for a kid to be running, running around. If, um, you know, the, in Groton, yeah, if they're running around, they're on, in a back road, where if they run off the road, they're running onto a dirt road.
What about Kids Country Playground area? I'm trying to think of other centrally located.
I just, I, I really think our idea of having it behind the, uh, Selectmen, when we, whoever thought of that originally, that plan, that was a good use for that area, and that would still be a good use for it, a farmer's market, and that's very similar to this well attended one that Groton has it, they have it behind the church, it's not on the main road, and it's extremely well attended.
And all the other businesses that are still close around here too.
Right, they'd access, the kids would go get ice cream at the ice cream shop and walk right on over.
So I, I, I say that we bring them in and talk with them and say that these are our concerns, and that that's what we're thinking of options, if he's interested. I'm okay with that.
Okay. We could do Thursday night, if I'm there, no, I'm serious.
Well, that was, then you're talking about having a, a, a big, big happening around here on Thursday night. It would enable both things to operate simultaneously and build off each other.
That's exactly what I'm thinking. To the farmer's market and walk over to the concert.
Right.
Get your ice cream on the way.
Yeah.
By at least degrees, I want me to have this ice cream, I think it's your hardware being.
That could work.
Yeah, that, I mean, thinking about it in that way, but.
And if we got, you know, sign, farmer's market, that we could put up, uh, around.
Yeah.
We could get facilities for the grass board and we could, we'll get rest to paint farmer's market.
We're gonna have lots of, of scrap load from the gazebo.
Right, that's right, we could.
There's a lot over at the.
And by the way, that, so the gazebo.
There's a lot over at the town garden right now, we just, uh, we just.
The gazebo's gonna be fixed by the time this thing starts anyway.
So, um, we want to invite Andrew in to speak with us on the seventh of March.
Well, why don't I just reach out and ask him, like, to, to come in?
Yeah, and, um, maybe let's work up some, uh, ideas where and how and to advertise, because if we're gonna send him back here, nobody's gonna know he's there, but there isn't some for them.
Oh, yeah. I ran ahead and put up a sign, like, on one nineteen here.
Here, and I'd want it at the common?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So we'll reach out to him and ask him to come in.
Alright, Teresa, I've gotta say, you've got the funkiest camera going on.
Yeah, it was like, Blair Witch Project, like, if somebody got Teresa, she's gone.
That's, uh, anyway, okay, um, that takes care of that, so we, the DLTA augmentation thing. I have stuff that we don't. Alright, this is, um, this company provided MRPC with an additional amount of fu- funding that is to be used for, um, plants, so here it is, I'll just read this, there it goes again. It's, what it's doing is, it's showing us the whole trip, like you have an owl going on every so often. Anyway. Um. There, this is the DLTA A grant will allow MRPC to assist our communities with activities and projects that may include, but are not limited to identification and understanding of top project priorities. And I, you know, research, assessment, and identification of federal, state, and other funding opportunities, review of grant application guidelines and preparation of applications and or identification of specially skilled needed, provision of needed procurement services, and assessment of municipal grant reporting capacity and determination of assistance needed by the RBN. So, um, the deadline for this is March seventh, so that is our next meeting, so this is another one where we're putting it together and then going for it. But I think that this would be an opportunity to look at the studies that we have had done, the one for West Townsend, the one for, you know, the traffic control through that intersection there, the, um, bikeability and walkability study here, um, to look at, I had a whole list somewhere, I can't find it, um, to where we need sidewalks, all the things that we've talked about, downtown revitalization, um, to, um, make that timeline, that room that we've been talking about.
Mm-hmm.
This is the room, the opportunity to get the room made, in other words, what are the projects that we have, our pie in the sky ideas, and the ones that we've had studies done for? And then what's the order to get them in and what grants would allow us to accomplish those goals? So, I would like to put something together, um, on that for the March seventh deadline. The, there is, if there are still funds available, they do a second round, same as they do with the LTA.
Yeah.
So the second round is not due until April fourth, but I think we could probably write a, a proposal for this. Um, we should think about what staff is gonna be working with, how it's gonna work for this, I mean, this would be perfect for the grant administrator that will no longer have um, to work with the MRPC, or these are things we are thinking about. There are things that, um, are, you know, the, the shared streets and spaces out back here that wasn't funded. I mean, I would still like to see that looked at, you know.
Do we still have all of that stuff?
It's in that file four oh four.
It is there.
Is it there now?
No, no, it's not in there now, we've gotta figure out why it can't be dropped off with SharePoint.
But that's where it was, I have put everything in.
But it's on, uh, it's on the common drive and it's verified that it's there. But it's on, uh, it's on the common drive and it's verified that it's there, so we're looking.
So we haven't lost.
We haven't lost it.
I mean, I could go search through my zillions of stuff up here now.
No, we just need to figure out how to put it back into SharePoint.
Yeah, I wasn't even selecting when it was.
It hadn't been accessed for a period of time. It just, it went into archives, but it's still on the server.
Okay, all right, good. So, um, yeah, cause that was a good idea. Finishing up the Jeff Street parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
Getting a sidewalk up to here, getting the bu- where we would like the bus to be. I mean, there are so many ideas and this is a perfect way to get someone other than us. Well, it's a way to get it down, written down somewhere, because things don't happen unless they're written down somewhere.
Right. So how do you wanna, how do you wanna attack this?
Well, in usual Ronnie Cowell fashion, I would write something up and that's back into everybody. But, um, if you would like to attack it, feel free. I mean, I'm, I'm welcome for anybody else to write this up. Um, but we should write up similar to what we're doing for the UPWP or the previous DLTA that's used out as a model and bullet point are where we have all these ideas. And what goes to Community One Stuff? What goes to, I mean, well, I am working on Community One Stuff with Emily right now. We're gonna try to get in the first round for March seventeenth. But this is bigger than that, because there are a lot of things that aren't.
Right, they don't necessarily fit perfectly somewhere or maybe they do, we just don't know.
Don't know. And this says they'll help you identify, review of grant, no. Um, research assessment and identification of federal, state and other funding opportunities.
So the. What you're looking at is like a document like we discussed earlier, something like that, that has punch items on all of these things to help us coordinate funding and, and process or.
I would like to see, yeah, a chart. Here are our ideas. These are the things we would like to do.
Mm-hmm.
These are the things that we have studied for, from the things we would like to do.
Yeah.
Here is, um, uh, what grants will we work with? Can you identify the grants? What are they? And oh, by the way, did we have a timeline above that? Like, it makes sense to do this here, here, here and here, you know, um.
I'll, I'll take it down. I'll take this maybe.
Okay. Thank you. So thank you so much for the meeting on Monday with Emily to do the community monster.
If I could have a list of all of the things that we have, the ones that we've.
Why don't you make a list of the ones that you know and I'll make the one, list of the ones that I know.
Okay.
And, um, Teresa, if you know of projects that are, you know, in the works or, you know, pie in the sky thing, um, maybe Eric, do you ask the department heads where the projects that they're thinking of? I'll, I'll, I bet you Rex can come up with a few.
Oh, I bet you they could do it.
Yeah, between Emmy and Jim and Roger, we'd probably be tall.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and, and how, I mean, even things like continued maintenance on the, um, you know, the Kids Country Playground, um, making it ADA accessible. That's one of the things I would like to put in for the Community One Stuff.
Yeah.
And then also, if there's something that we can do up at Old Meeting House Park, to make that ADA accessible. You know, an ADA accessible trail. What about, um, a, uh, community, um, kayak rental, maybe down at Adams Dam? Uh, you know, something, and that was part of, by the way, the, um, shared streets and spaces thing that we had talked about. Um, just all these ideas that everybody is doing everything that they need to do and to sit down and do all of this, there's never a time. This is perfect.
Right.
So.
Okay.
So I'll make my list and submit to you. And what's an idea? Well, let's do the day of our next meeting. Um. Without breaking every open room on the world.
It was up to me and I could worry about it more.
Okay. Sounds good. All right.
Well, if they send it to you and then we'll just, I can put it in a folder on, um, SharePoint.
SharePoint. Then we can compile.
Yeah.
And, um, we just have to have it fairly well written up by, we have to have it written up by March seventh, because we have to assess this then. And have it in by midnight. There it goes again. Look at that.
That's, that's, that's our, our owl camera.
It's that, our owl camera that's doing it. That is really kind of weird. I don't know what it is.
Your computer has got some sort of poltergeist in it.
Do, 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 do.
That's right. All right. Um, that takes care of point, for point A.
All righty.
All right. Um. All right, moving down to work section, ARPA project. Um, I had reviewed spending on there because, um, the question was, were there any questions on what we got last time? That's the only reason I put that there. Um, and then we also have a new request, and I think the one thing that I would look at is is the COVID related expenses. Um. Yes. One that we really haven't spent, um, anything from. Uh, so it's ARPA fifteen.
Yeah.
Other COVID related expenses, um, that we have spent no money from. And COVID is over.
Officially.
On May eleventh.
On May eleventh, officially done.
That's it.
No one will have COVID. No one will ever catch COVID.
There was, uh, sorry, too many pages. So this came in, so this is from you for us. Um, post-COVID municipal buildings assessment. Um, I was wondering if this is, uh, did you check this out with Jennifer's?
I did not check it out with Jennifer, no.
Okay, so if, um, if that could be checked with Jennifer, this is for requesting forty K to look at all the municipal buildings and, um, put together a plan for future needs for all the town buildings uh, with an assessment of our current state and recommendations of future updates, modifications and repairs.
Right.
Um, would we hire consultants to do that?
That's what I'm thinking we, we need to do. I, I, I have been asking for the past two years to, to get some sort of understanding of where we're at with our municipal buildings. Um, seeing how the track record is. I haven't seen anything and I really do think we need to have for each municipal building, um, uh, what's going on with the building, what needs to be done for the building, and then that way we can plan better for each of these buildings.
Yep.
Um, I think of post-COVID, um, the COVID had put us in situations where, uh, we had to make modifications within the building. Is those modifications, do we need to keep them the way they are now? To better prepare ourselves in the future if something like this happens again. Um, and it's not just for one building and not a general. We need to have it specific for each one. Um, so I believe that we should, we should hire somebody to be able to do that.
There, there are companies that do this in fact.
Yes.
Work.
Yeah.
And I was in the hole when they did this on their facilities. They did a whole, it was a map and.
I just.
They got away in a building.
I threw forty thousand just as a, as a figure. I don't know if we need more. I, you know, that's something that.
Yeah, I think that's, we, I think we should, we should check and, and, um, for under fifty thousand, we're allowed to do things with quotes. But we could just get three quotes. And if they all came in at, at over fifty thousand, then we know we don't have money.
Right.
But we could just.
And then we get the next.
Yeah, yeah, we'd have to find more funds.
And can we include with this, um, the, this was one of my what happened with the question. The municipal records that are in, uh, old library, doing something with those?
Probably not over forty thousand.
No, no, no.
I mean, that, that would probably cost about forty thousand itself to do something like that. But, but I, so I mean, we, we have, um, so I have, uh, uh, I have a, a vendor that I got their information when I was actually at the management associate uh, meeting who does this, that stuff.
I know that Ross had done this too last spring, because we were gonna try to do it in phases.
Right.
And then we, we were gonna, um, we didn't have, when we went to budget, we didn't have enough money put in, in the budget.
Right.
Um, so.
So he, if he does, so I'll, I'll touch base with Ross and see who he was working with.
Okay, and then the vendor that you found.
And then, yeah, the vendor that I talked to. And, you know, again, we can get quotes as to what it would take to, to scan them and store them. Which is what we need, or scan them and shred them.
So does it make sense to check with, um, Jennifer to see if this building assessment and records management, whatever it's called, um, could, if we could use COVID funds for that? Um.
Yeah, I can, I can reach out to her.
Teresa, what are your thoughts on that?
You're muted, Teresa. You're muted.
Teresa, you need to unmute.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It makes sense. I know there's a lot of concern about the libraries' funds. I mean, uh, what are we gonna do with the library for their record storage? Is this.
Well, that's the one I'm talking about is.
Right, I know, and, but it's not just COVID. It's mold and, and what mold and all other things. Can it be overlapped into that?
That's what we're.
Yeah, that's, that's, I, I think any one of these digital records companies understand that they're coming to do municipal records, they're gonna have to deal with environmental issues.
Mm-hmm.
It just is. Now, whether that means it's getting more expensive, they probably need to come and do an evaluation of, you know, environment here and, you know.
Cause we looked at it in capital planning and we, there's no way we can take that on. They're estimating sixty thousand. And we don't, that's without even looking into it. And that was, they, they were saying most likely a low estimate.
So, uh, okay, this is the October eighteenth meeting. This is my, one of my what happened with this question. Um, we had tentatively discussed applying for the Community Contact Best Practice Grant for digitizing municipal and released, released, um, records. Did we ever apply for that?
No.
No, okay. So that, I suppose if we can't use COVID funds, that when Community Contact comes around again, whenever that is, that might be another possibility for funding, because we really don't have the money in the town. Uh, to do this, then it needs them. So, um, all right, so I guess if, if we're all good, check with Jennifer.
Yeah, I think we should talk to Jennifer and let her know what we're doing and see what, what.
Our target would be ARPA fifteen.
Yeah.
For the funding, because we had put that as thought, we didn't know if we were gonna need to be giving out tests, testing people as a townwide, if we would need to set up some sort of, I don't know.
Yeah, I think those would be two good projects for.
Yeah, we'd be, if we had town meeting, if we had to do special parameters around town meeting, around all of that kind of stuff.
So that was all set up for that, so let's, um.
But I would like to be able to, to, to have this done so that we can go to capital planning to say, and say, this, here's the, here's all of these things. So if, if there is a, uh, request for funding for this, we know that we have, we have documentation that it has been assessed and, and, and again, planning, 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 making sure that we have.
And do we have a, a Saturday meeting scheduled between the Board of Selectmen and this capital planning?
Uh, no Saturday meeting for capital planning. Capital planning needs to provide to us by, um, March second, the plan.
Okay, so we had March first, but they thought we were all meeting, we, they thought we were meeting with you guys on a Saturday. And I said, I didn't have that on my calendar, so.
Since FinCom, Board of Selectmen and FinCom meeting with the department.
Yes, and the capital plan comes into the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen review it at our meeting on the seventh.
Okay, well, we'll be ready. We, we, we got it almost already on. So the only change we'll make is on that. Okay.
Thoughts, recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of, it has the final say in what goes forward with capital based on the budget. So it's the Board of Selectmen who vote on whatever is brought to us by capital planning.
Got it.
All right, um. All right, so that's ARPA projects, pretty much unless anybody else has anything else.
Mm-hmm.
Um, checking with Jennifer on these two things. On this and this. I would give that to you for the DLPN.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, um. And then just figure updates and reports.
Um. So I wanna do a couple of quick ones first. Um, the, uh, the opioid settlement fund. Um, in addition to the funds that we've already received, uh, we, uh, became eligible for settlements. I think there were six or seven other entities that settled. Um, and so we signed up on those. I, I signed up on the, on the receipt of those funds.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm, I'm anticipating we're gonna get them sometime this calendar year. I hope we get them before the end of the fiscal year. Um, because, uh, uh, as I explained to the chair, and I think as we talked about the last time these funds came in, um, the Department of Revenue does not provide us with a way to treat these funds any differently than any other revenue that we have, which means we can't allocate them to anyone until they go into pre-cap. Because they're not a part of our budget.
Right.
So we have, um, the original, um, two payments, I believe, that we've gotten, the original opioid settlement plus these upcoming payment. Um, uh, once they go into our, our general fund coffers and then obviously aren't spent, they become part of the free, the certified pre-cash for that year. So the earliest time we would be able to spend money that came in during this fiscal year is gonna be, obviously, in a December town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
At a special town meeting, we would have to, but they'll be allocated for, for our expenditure out of pre-cap.
Well, I have a question, because we are, through our fund, doing opioid crisis things. So if, due to the fact that none of these monies have triggers on them, so to speak, um, you know, little tags that say this, this dollar is for this, this dollar is for that. If we are spending an equivalent amount of ARPA funds to the opioid settlement, because we had originally figured that in to, um, our ARPA figures.
Yeah.
Is it necessary to, if we have to show the state that we, we have put way more money than what we're getting?
Oh, there's no question about that.
Um, through, because of the ARPA.
No, I believe that we could demonstrate the revenue.
That we are spending, um, the amount of money that we received in settlement on, to combat the opioid crisis.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just a question.
So the answer is yeah.
Okay.
We could demonstrate that the town dedicated resources equal to or greater than the amount that came into the opioid settlement towards the opioid.
Greater than, yeah, because we had thought it would be, we didn't know how this would work, but we had a certain dollar amount. In fact, we'll probably tell you exactly what that was.
Yeah.
Um, that we were going to, um, uh, allocate and then over and above that even, and then for each consecutive year of the, um.
The ARPA money.
The ARPA money in each consecutive year that ARPA was in.
Right, we're gonna continue to fund that.
Yes, exactly. Yes, exactly. So, so I guess what I'm saying is. As long as we're keeping track, which we are, of the funds that are going there. Um, does it matter? This is after uh, the discussion that we have, does it matter? Because we are spending.
Right, it it doesn't matter unless the town wanted to be able to stay. And this, uh, in addition to the ARPA funds, we took all the actual revenue that came in, we spent that as well. Um, but I don't, I don't think. So right now, I think we've satisfied the requirements for the for the opioid. settlement.
Right.
By spending funding on opioid, on on the the ARPA funding on opioids. So if the if the Board of Selectmen feels like that's. Efficient, I mean. It that 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 meets the kind of our our obligation. Then we don't have to worry about doing anything with the opioid settlements, we're just depositing the general fund, understanding that. Where you're spending ARPA funny, ARPA money on. On the the opioid settlements, which I think is a perfectly legitimate. Way to do it, especially since the D O R is not making it easy to spend the settlement fund.
Correct.
And you gotta pay me kindly back.
Which is a little bit, they should, but then.
Yeah, they.
That's additional accounting requirement.
And they 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 this this happens all the time with special kinds of revenue, D O R doesn't. Make it easy to do with it what some statute tells you have to do with it.
Right.
It's the same thing with marijuana money, we we found out that they, you know, it's just a, it creates a logistical nightmare, but.
No, this was part of our. Category one, but we need for our three way to victim. Um. Well, we we don't need this right now, right? So.
Okay, so if the board's satisfied, then then that's the way we'll proceed with the opioid settlement.
I I would just wanna know, keep a total of what those dollars are, so we know.
Oh, certainly, but as as we knew from the first one, it's not.
No. Any, we thought it was gonna be.
Yeah, it's not coming in this big, it's big money, uh, and if if that changes. I will obviously bring it to the board's attention and we can, I would, yeah.
Right, so this is something that when the community services coordinator presents the budget. In the summer, you know, just like she did for last year when she. Budgeted for next year, we need to make sure that we have accounted for. That opioid money in the dollars that are distributed.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
Um. One other quick uh, note, um. Uh, the chair and I met with uh, Fisher Game. Um, about um, several town properties. Uh, some that we wanted to discuss with them and some that they per per. Prematively wanted to discuss with us.
Oh, they had.
They had their wish list.
Additional list.
They had a little wishlist that they came in with, um.
Good for them.
Uh, so you know, hey, they're looking at Townsend. Um, so the first thing that we discussed with them was uh, one eighty-two Warren Road. Um, and they were on board with the the kind of tentative plan that. That the Selectmen had come up with, which was. To survey the portion of the property that's closest to the road. Um, subdivide it so that there's a a legal lot. Closest to the road and uh. Transmit the sell the rear portion.
Yeah.
Remaining rear portion.
They were.
Sufficiency game, yeah, they were, they were fine with that, and then. Uh, obviously, we would look to, I think, you know, Habitat for Humanity or some other. Um, entity to try and um, build a a house on that front lot, so. The tentative plan was to ask the um. Affordable Housing Trust to fund. A um, survey. Of the front, I think we figured it only had to be two acres.
Two acres, I believe.
That it was in R two as opposed to what we thought it was in.
Yeah.
We thought it was in R three, but I think we realized it was in R two.
Right.
But whatever, that we'll 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 nail that down.
Yeah.
Um. And um, and Fisher Game did say that they arranged it in the back. For sure. So that would be um, helpful.
And Habitat for Community is looking for new bids for.
Oh, are they? Um, do you, do you have a contact there?
Maybe.
Could you contact your contacts?
I will certainly do that.
We'd have your people tell their people.
Yeah, and see if they're interested.
Yeah, they're looking at, I don't know, twenty-four and twenty-five.
Oh, good.
Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
That's perfect.
Yeah. Um. The one other property that we that that they discussed with us preemptively was. Um, a lot of South, did you say it was? Townsend Hill?
It's it's on Townsend Hill, it's uh, landlocked and it's off Warner Road.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a landlocked five acre parcel, it's it's on the very top of the hill. It was originally purchased with the thought that it was gonna have a water tower there. Donated, right.
Um.
With the idea of it being a water tower, but our discussions with the Water Department. Indicate that it's no longer feasible to have a water tower because they have done that. Um.
Because.
Fisher Game has bought all the land around it.
And now they want it.
So they would like us to sell that to them. Um, and those are two that we would try to get. Um. Transferred to them before the end of the fiscal year, because they have some additional funding to be able to obtain some property.
So what we need.
And this would increase our pilots.
Yeah, we would, we'd get some CAC in real quick, not a huge amount, but.
Yeah.
Some CAC in. And then be able to turn around and um, and increase our pilot with the anchorage.
Okay.
And I would, I would like the funds that the town gets to go back into the Affordable Housing Trust. If in fact the Affordable Housing Trust is funding for.
Yes, I agree with that, I mean, I think that makes sense, that that, you know, if the.
Um, and I guess too, that that would be contingent on Habitat for Humanity taking up the front half because. The to pay for the survey, the Affordable Housing Trust would need to know that it is for. Affordable perfectly.
Mm hmm, either of that, or we'd have to designate any sale price of that front half to be affordable as a dress as well.
Yeah, that could work.
That could work too.
That could work.
Either of those situations, I think, would be efficient to authorize expenditure for a while.
Right, so the goal would be to get this um, property justified by May. So we could go to the planning board, have it finished by May, so that they could purchase. And we.
Yeah.
Um.
June fifteenth, I think, they need to write us checks.
Yes, and we need to, we need to let them know soon.
Yeah.
Um, whether or not we can do that, so the question is, do both of these need to go to the town meeting?
And that's the one thing I'm gonna ask Adam, is to try to to ask Adam as to whether or not transfers to to the Department of. Fisher Game, do they require a town meeting vote? And I I thought the answer was yes, but.
These are currently in the Affordable Housing Trust?
No, they're owned by the town.
And so, yeah, I I I think so too, but Anne had mentioned that she thought there might be a loophole that allows transfers. By Board of the Board of Selectmen. And not by a town meeting vote, so I've never heard of that before. She mentioned it.
Yeah, it's something about other towns.
So I'll ask Adam and whatever Adam says, if you, I I think we're gonna have to go to town meeting.
I, yeah, cause I think we have.
Yeah.
We, meaning the. The housing authority have have been in situations like this where we always had to go in front of the town.
I thought so too, but she said it and I was like, hey, it's another way.
Why we did the trust, we would allow the trust to make those decisions.
Yeah, yeah. Um.
Okay.
Um, okay, so. Um, by law review committee. Is it something that is required to happen? According to the charter, I believe. Um, every, is it five years?
Every ten years, with the years being three.
Yes, that starts with three.
Something, or maybe it's.
I thought it was every five years on the three and the eight.
On the three and the eight, yeah.
Anyway.
We're a perfect timing for that.
So, um, it is, there's time for the 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 Board of Selectmen to appoint a bylaw review committee.
Okay, so at on.
So, I'm gonna double check to see, I don't, I don't recall there being any kind of requirements for.
Who makes up?
Who makes up, but I I didn't, I I need to look at that more closely.
Okay. So maybe at the three, seven meeting?
Hopefully, I mean, we'll know, I I I mean, it won't take long to research, who should be on it. If there's if there's a requirement, but either way, we need to appoint it, and this is their review. Uh, top to bottom of our of our bylaws to see whether or not they're appropriate.
I think it's.
Um, and the last, the two RFPs, so my hope is to get the RFP for the bike lanes out before the end of this week. Um. Um, and then to have the um, uh, the the. Um. The final view of the uh, the the town buildings by the.
Definitely, for the bike lanes, um. The the signage. Um, can I give that list maybe to Sabrina and she could.
You can order it, yeah, yeah.
They usually map what gives the quotes.
Yeah.
And then we order.
Yes.
So.
I think we should absolutely do that.
Okay, do that.
We do that. Um. Okay, so, um, I included in, I I I sent emails to folks. Um, regarding a letter that the town of Pepperell. Sent to the school board regarding. Um. Uh, though actually sent to the superintendent regarding the budget, the preliminary budget. Um. Um, so it it basically went through a lot of the same issues that I raised when we were at the. School board meeting where they presented the budget about the burden on the towns and. You know, how the funds they were asking for are reasonable given the revenues. Um, and so there, uh, they're uh, both select board and FinCom signed off on the letter. Um. Uh, that went to. Um. The superintendent, but also went to uh, the school committee. Congressperson for hand, uh, their senator, their rep. Um, and then all the various town administrators so that we could. So I I I prepared a similar letter and gave everyone a copy. Um. Uh, just a proposed draft letter that the board. Could send if you. Felt so inclined um, to the superintendent. Um, uh, basically saying, uh, again, repeating some of the things that that were said at the. At the meeting, but also putting it in writing. And then, you know, I I suggest that we copy the same, the same entities that were copied on. The Pepperell copy so that the state, folks in state understand. You know, what's happening with the regional school districts and how they're not getting funded appropriately and burdens are falling back on the town. Um. So that I included in um. Uh, in emails to all of the board members.
We want me to um, share them?
Um.
So I read it, Eric, and um, I actually agree with it, but. I, we need to talk to the board because it's different than what we talked when we. I shouldn't say we need to, I feel like we should talk, because when they sat and met with us, we were talking about having conversations. About having ways of meeting together and supporting them and. And all talking from the same page and trying to sell an override. Um. And this letter certainly is going a different direction. Um, which I'm fine doing, because this town is not gonna support the override, but I'm, I was willing to. Get on the the train if that's what it was gonna try to, at least try to get it to work. Um. But, um. That's my my concern now, like, I just, you know. I wanna make sure that we have a follow-up conversation with the uh. Members that came to us and said, look, upon further review. I don't see that how I can support an override vote.
I, I. I'll let you talk.
Well, I was gonna say, I I I think the the goal of the letter is not to necessarily preclude an override. Um, because I, you know, I I I I think we we tried to make it very clear that. If the, if the school committee was gonna push an override, that we would. You know, try to figure out ways to help them reach out to the town and do it. Um, but I I think, I think the concerns that that I I have heard, and I think probably every member of the Board of Selectmen. I've heard from folks who are paying attention to the school's presentation is. Is that this is not an override that's gonna stop an override next year.
Right.
Is that regardless of what happens this year, they're gonna come in for a very large override next year, because they've got. The bus contract coming up and they've got five collective bargaining agreements coming up next year. So they're gonna come in for a perhaps two and a half override next year. Um, and if that's the case, if that's a pre, a foregone conclusion. Then it I I think it. Whether I would support an override or not this year, I think the best political move. Is to try to figure out a way to get under the the, to get your budget. Without an override this year, and then ask for your override next year, instead of trying to count on it two years in a row. Cause I think that, you know, that's.
And I and I agree with you, I I'm just saying, I don't think that was the messaging. That the s- school committee members that met in front of us left with, I don't think that was the tone we had.
The, but what I see in this letter, this letter is Brad Morgan, it's not for the school committee. Um, and so, I mean, if. You know, unless they're one and the same, but I don't think so. Um, I think that this is to say, hey, you know, you need to look at your budget and understand that. We're, we can't do it. You know, um, and and if he comes back and says, I'm too bad for you. Then then I think we go to the school committee and say, okay, if you're going with that budget. Then what we said is exactly it, you need to get, you need to push the overlap. Um, because our budget will come together. Without um, um, maybe not perfectly. You know, for everything that every department wants, but um. But it will come together, this is the first year in a very long time that we are not. Honoring contracts that were made before our time. Um, so it makes it easier for us to do what the town needs, um. But but it's within the two percent, so everything's not perfect. But if the schools come in with a six to ten percent increase. Well, that's a. We can't do it. So this, I think, is the appealing to the superintendent to say, take a second look.
Well, in in, if I may. Um. I I see this as, yes, we we did talk to the school committee. Members uh, in regards to, yes, we're working with you, but I agree that this is a letter direct to the superintendent. Saying this is kind of our position here. Um, you know, this is, this is what we, and then. Depending upon the response we get, then we go back to the school committee. So I I agree that that she, I think we should move forward with this.
And Teresa, I also wanna, and I also wanna make it very clear, because you know, Chaz had the benefit of going to these budget meetings. That the the budget summit meetings that we had were not like the meeting that we had in front of the school committee.
Yeah.
The budget meetings that we had, we told them, like, the town can only afford this.
Okay, okay, no, I definitely, I have no problem signing this letter, I'll be in tomorrow morning, first thing, I'll sign it, so.
I'm okay with it.
I just feel that the tone was so much different than what we had said in the meeting.
Well.
I shouldn't say so much different, because we kept saying there's no money, but.
Yeah.
Right.
We said it in many different ways.
But we said we'd help you beg for it, that I think that's the only difference we said.
Oh, if they can, if they can adjust their budget to get in. You know, the two to the three percent range, we're good.
Mm hmm.
If they can't, well then, everything that we said at that last meeting stands.
Well, I mean, if they, if if. If, if Brad turns around and says. It's no go, I've got, these are all the demands, they're telling me how to do this, we don't have a choice, we gotta go for this override. Then I, I will turn around and have him come down and talk to the town and like, do everything we can to try and, like, I don't wanna. I would not sabotage an attempted override if, if he, if he, after reconsideration, feels like. It's the, it's, it's, uh, it, it's still needed. I just, I just want to make it clear that. You know, especially considering the, the, the fact that you're telling us in every way you possibly can, that you're gonna come in next year and ask for an override. You can't do it two years in a row. It might fly one year, it's not gonna fly two years, you know, and so.
And, and I think if we have him available to do that talk and have it done early. Um, and he can see what he's up against, it might change his mind to make, you know, changes. Cause if he has to go through, you know, kids pulling out their po- uh, pockets, you know.
Yeah.
Looking for lint.
No, um, right. And, and, you know, if you're gonna go for an override, next year is a better year than next year. Um, that, as far as budgets go, personal budgets for everybody in the town. You know, people are just still reeling from.
Yeah.
All the inflation, um, adjustments they've had to make.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's fine.
So is there a motion to go forward with sending this letter, um, that Eric has written to, um. Superintendent Morgan?
I will make a motion that we sign the letter. Regarding our opinions on the, uh, budget concerns to Superintendent of North Middlesex Regional Schools.
Second.
All right, inappropriate. Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Marsh, yes.
Chaz Sexton, Iranian, yes.
Amber, I can tell. Thanks, Aaron, for reading.
Sure. Um, and then that would be. Would be that for me.
Can I, can I throw something in there? We'll, we'll call this the chair's report. Um, I wanted to, uh, um, this is for review. For the town administrator and the administrator and assistant of the Board of Selectmen. I would like to, um, uh, get those done before, um. The end of April, saying it's how your one year anniversary is made to think.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and I would like to be able to provide it while I'm still. So, um, I, I was thinking of putting together a package with Callie, she's put me some stuff. That would go to, um. Everybody, I guess, um, and, uh, if I like self-evaluation too. And, um, and then we'll, you know, have a little timeline. Put a package together with Callie that'll be distributed in March twenty-one, but we're not meeting March twenty-fourth.
May, uh, twenty-eighth.
Um. Uh, maybe I'm gonna, March seventh's been too close.
It's very, very soon.
Yeah, um, twenty-eight, with responses back to Callie April fourth, evidence that she could kind of. Was that seen, right, to you? I'm trying to, um, you know, uh, be the tracker cop on all of this. And with the review on April eighth. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, so I guess the, uh, I'll work with Callie and we have time now. Uh, till March twenty-eighth to get things together and then get the input back and then write the final review. Uh, for the April.
That still feels like it's coming very quick.
It is, but that's.
So was Christmas.
Yeah, the one year.
Yeah, that's hard to believe, actually, very hard to believe, it's almost March.
I didn't know the best way to bring this forward, so I figured this was. Maybe I'll say it here, the chair's report, not really a chair's report. All right, um. Reports from Board of the Yon, General Government. Um. That would get you through from. Are you elected? Oh, boy.
Yeah, I'm here, um, we had, um, the Energy Committee, um. Had a meeting, I unfortunately wasn't able to attend, but I got the minutes, um. They, uh, pulling together a bunch of new items to look at, uh, for green energy. One, a couple of projects, I'm asking them to look at, uh, see if there's a possibility. Um, that they could look at, um, if we could look at a truck for facilities. Uh, go to a complete electric vehicle, we haven't tried that yet. Want to see if that's a feasibility, uh, just to try it, see, uh, if that's something, especially if we're gonna get. Um, the, um. Solar canopies, uh, we thought that might be a good thing. Um, there's lighting in the, uh, libraries, uh, not lighting, uh, ceiling fans. That if it was, uh, a better use of ceiling fans could keep that place more controlled because of the high ceilings. So there's some energy savings there, um, that they think they can do. They already have on the list to look at the boiler, so they continue to have that, that's, uh, gonna be the pri- priority. I think that's the number one priority now that they have. For the memorial hall, yeah. And, uh, other little, um, m- minor items he- uh, here and there, um. Uh, but they're moving her on and, uh, they should have a more, uh, robust list, uh. Prioritizing them, uh, as we go through. And capital planning, we've met with all the department heads, uh. We're going through, we're meeting on the first to go through everything one final time. Uh, we've got, pretty much got, uh, ideas on our priority. I did have the two questions, uh, our biggest question was about the lo- library, like, how long could we put that off? So I was gonna ask about, was opera funds a cho- a choice there, so I'm glad you brought that up tonight. Um, and, uh, the other one was, uh, the truck faci- facilities. So we're looking if green energy is a possibility, um, for that. Um, the rest, uh, we're working through and we'll be ready to present to you on March seventh. And, uh, that is about it.
Um, so you'll get us the capital plan will come to the Board of Selectmen on March second. For review on March seventh, correct?
I have it ready now, but I want, I do, um, it, we were gonna present it to you on March seventh. Our meeting is March first.
It's required, um, two months before, uh, town meeting, town meeting is May third, correct?
Well, we'll leave it, we'll get it out March first, we wanted to go one, one more time over it on March first.
Okay, yeah, I figured after the March fourth, first meeting that you had.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll mail it out after the March first, we just want to give it one final.
Yeah, you, and, and certainly preceding it second, okay, so it's two months before town meeting, so it's due to us. March second, um, by charter or whatever, um, and, uh. Um, and now give us time to review and then meet with us on, uh, Board of Selectmen meets with capital planning on the. All right.
And if you want, I can give you a preliminary before, I have the preliminary ready now, if you want to look at it before the final, okay.
So it could change, so, you know, you guys.
Okay.
Yeah. So, all right, so, um.
Um. Well, I've been working, as you saw, with the water department, we've been working on a lot of things there, um. I've also been working with the planning, um, there was a, um. Um. We've been very busy with, um, A and Rs and, and their, uh, stormwater management plan. Um, I've been going through a lot with, with planning. Um, I've been doing kind of a lot of stuff in the background, um, the meetings for planning are. Hitting at the same time the water meetings are, so I've been juggling those two back and forth. Um, but, um, there, all of our elected boards are really very busy right now, but with a lot of. Uh, with a lot of things that are, that are moving forward, um. Outside of that, um, I did have a flyer for recreation that they just put out, but I didn't, um, I didn't bring it with me. Uh, but I'll report on it next time, on their upcoming things, I know that they have their ski program moving along. Um, uh, I also wanted to ask, um, they have one of their members, um, looking for an email account. A town email account that I was asked for, and I didn't bring it up last meeting, um. The, um.
One of the members of what?
Of the rec department. Um, I know that the assistant rec person is no longer there, so we do have an open. Email account if we wanted to, to use it, I'm sure that we could use it for that individual, uh, and if. If you guys are, are, are agreeable, then I can put it in for.
I think we need, and we've talked about this, I'm an attempt before, I think we need an overall plan to provide. Um, a town email address for pretty much. You know, like, there should be a planning board app, there should be a, but who gets? We've discussed that, so my feeling is that, yeah, there's an extra person there, but we also have an extra landing. So we're gonna give that someone on the phone, we have an extra one for the grant administrator, so are we gonna give that to? You know. I, I think we need to be consistent in what we do.
Well, I don't think we should take, be taking like email from, from staff to give to boards. This is a staff member, who I think is filling in for some of the second in charge of duties.
Yes.
Oh, it's a staff member?
Yeah, it's not someone on the rec committee, this is a.
Oh.
This is a staff member.
A staff member, one of the, one of the.
Who doesn't have another email, who doesn't have.
Who doesn't have a, a town email.
We have a staff member, that.
Yeah, the, the, the ones that run the, 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 after, the rec kids programs.
Programs and all of that.
So it, you know, I, I don't have a problem with that person having an email address, we are gonna have to figure out what happens when. When and if there's a, a person hired to be the.
There, there can, to, to answer your question, there's always can be a mailbox set up for planning at. Townsend, um, for, you know, that, that's a generic one, but these are, it has to be an employee that actually can log into. To the account to, to have a license with all of the things that, that a, a person will need. Like your Word and your Excel and all of that kind of stuff. So there, there's, uh, each one of those departments has a generic email box. But that's attached to whoever's gonna be attending that mailbox, with somebody that actually has to log in. Through their account in order to get planning or housing or, you know, that kind of stuff.
I'm just looking for permission to write the onboarding slip so that we can get the, the, the account set up. I, I think we should do that.
Okay, all right. What does Theresa think?
I agree.
That's all I have.
I don't have much.
When was the last time we swept the emails to make sure those people are still here, though? Yes.
Uh, seven days ago.
Oh, good job. I should have known, you're right on top of that.
Well, we had to renew licenses, that's why I moved in.
Okay, so I, I guess mostly what I've been doing is the transportation stuff, so you pre-tell you see the name. Um, there's only one last thing, um. All of that, tomorrow is the, um, meeting with consultation for the, um. Uh, Japanese not weed legal.
I thought we moved forward on that.
Yeah, we did, but there's permitting that must be done, um, and so, there's. Um.
That's a big bet.
Uh, yeah, so that's it, all I have. All right, moving on to announcements, communication, I could not find that contact person, I'm wondering if that was left over.
I think that was left over.
An earlier meeting, yeah, um.
This did come in, um, it's just a decision for the planning board to. As part of a, a, for, for communications. Yeah.
This is the stormwater management.
Yeah.
Um, let's scan that in and I'll put it in front of the next one.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it? Okay, um, we'll scan that in, I'll put it in communication, put it, I didn't, put it in here.
Sure.
I did put the, um, CPC, CPC, that community, um, business planner training collaborative.
Yeah.
Uh, that registration is open and, um. I, I think that everybody should take this, if at all possible.
Absolutely.
Anybody on the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, the, you know.
Noting Board, Constellation.
Constellation, everybody.
Yeah, but especially those two, the zoning board and the planning board especially.
Um, so this is Saturday, March eighteenth at Holy Cross. So, um, take a look at it and, um, I haven't tried the registering, but, um. The, the town should pay for it.
Yeah, the town will pay, we reimburse any, any volunteers who take these off.
Yeah, um, so, um, and we do have training money sitting around and different buckets.
We do. Isn't it Saturday?
We'll find it, we will find it.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm sure you guys have probably already gone to these, they're really helpful, especially for new board members.
I've gone to MACC once.
MACC is also very helpful.
Yeah, but I have not gone to the.
Yeah, these are good, very good for planning board and planning board members, they, they, who are, especially if you're new on the boards.
Yeah, I think this one was good, rethinking the retail. And what we want to do with the V P W. Um, also making the short-term rentals, there are things on here that could be, I might forward it to the Waterful House and Trunk for sale. Believe them, believe them. So anyway, um, the housing. So forward that along to everybody, and then there's a legal notice for the, um. VBA Administrative Appeal for the accessory apartments on Buildings Row. Um, and the date of this is Wednesday, March first. And the, um, legal notice in. That's all I have for announcements of communication. Anybody else have anything else? Um.
Right, I do know it.
Okay, uh, the next meeting is March seventh at six P M. And I don't have on this agenda the March eleventh, um, Saturday meeting, do we have time for now? I started working on the March seventh agenda and I put March eleventh on, do we have? What times are we thinking for the budget?
No, no, I know exactly the meaning you're talking about, I, I, never having attended one, I would, I, I, I don't know.
We had, okay, so we didn't want to do much, so last year we did it, like, um, oh, no, oh. oh, no, oh, no, it was like eight to twelve.
Nine, 10, 11, 12.
It was like 8:30 to 12, and we went going until 1:30.
1:30 and, it was a blur.
Um, so.
We had donuts.
And we had donuts. Uh, so, maybe.
I mean, I think we should shoot for the same 8:30 to 12:30.
8:30 to 12:00.
Which day is this?
This is Saturday, March 11, it's the meeting with the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and Department.
About the budget.
Okay, that's the one they were talking about, okay.
Yeah, that's the, that's the key, one, one thing I'm confused about.
Okay, so let's do 8:30. Uh, 12:30, sorry.
Hey, 8:30 or 12:00 is even better.
I do not think I can be there.
On the 11?
Nope. I gotta check something. I think I'm flying out to Friday on the 11th. I mean, flying out to Florida on the Friday.
We'll have it soon.
Check my calendar.
All right, so, um, is, is, we'll let Teresa check on that.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
All right, so you can let us know, Teresa.
Yep, I will.
Is there a motion to review and sign payroll and bills payable warrants out of session?
Do we have executive session?
We do.
Well, are we going to adjourn and go into executive session, or do we make that a separate motion?
Um, well, before we go to executive session, we need to, um, move to review and sign payroll and bills payable warrant out of session.
Oh, I thought you said to make a motion to adjourn, I'll make a motion that we sign warrants and payroll out of session.
Second.
Um, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Marsh, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell. All right, so now we need a motion to go into executive session and adjourn from executive session.
Okay, I make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss bargaining, and we will adjourn from executive session.
Teresa, could you make the motion, um, pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A?
Oh, yeah, let me pull it up.
Do you agree with them?
Yeah, it went down in my crazy computer again, it got lost again.
That Blair Witch Project.
Blair Witch Project computer. It's gone for good, never to be seen again.
Chad can do it if you want to.
Yeah, let Chad do it, and you'll stack it.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine, thank you, Chad.
Yeah, um, I moved that we go into executive session pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, subsection 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations for non-union personnel, Assistant Town Accountant.
And adjourn.
And adjourn from executive session.
And is there a second?
Second.
Um, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Marsh, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes.